Um, so for IP folks, um, five, four, three, two, one. And welcome to the Grand Prairie City Council meeting for Tuesday, May nineteenth, twenty twenty. Um, uh, we will start our meeting as we always do with our national anthem.
Oh, Canada, our home and native land. True patriot love in all of us command. With glowing hearts we see thee rise, the true north, strong and free. From far and wide, oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. Guards keep our land glorious and free. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee.
Thank you to the National Film Board for the images of our country and to an alumni of our very own Grand Prairie Boys Choir for the audio. Uh, we'll move into the adoption of the previous council meeting minutes. Can I get a motion to adopt that set of minutes? Uh, Councilor Minha.
Oh, thank you. Thank you, Mayor Givens. I moved the council of the minutes of, uh, city council meeting held Monday, May fourth, twenty twenty as presented.
Okay, thanks very much, Councilor Minha. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? And I'll just, uh, give council members a reminder that if your screen isn't on, it's as though you've left the council meeting. Um, we need to see a raise, a show of hands, um, we'll need to see a show of hands, uh, for any votes. We can't take any of the emojis because we don't know who might be pushing them on the other end. Thanks, Councilor Beeson. Uh, so Councilor Minha had that motion for the Monday, May fourth minute. Are there any errors or omissions that we need to correct before we adopt those minutes? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote, all in favor. Thank you, that looks unanimous, thank you. Um, and a motion to the agenda, Councilor Clayton.
Thanks, Mayor Givens, I was actually just voting on the last motion, but I'm happy to make the motion to, uh, to have council approve the, uh, agenda as presented. Are we on the minute, the minutes from the last council meeting as presented?
Agenda, agenda.
So, happy to move, council, uh, adopt the, uh, agenda for today's meeting as presented, thank you.
Hey, thanks, thanks, Councilor Clayton. Sorry to catch you off guard there, was there any discussion or debate on the agenda? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote, all in favor. Thank you, that motion carries unanimously. Um, and this brings us to the open delegation portion of our agenda. Uh, we have, uh, two opportunities for anybody to address council, we have an open delegation, uh, in the afternoon session and, uh, a scheduled delegation opportunity in the evening. Administration, uh, informed me at fourth council that there was somebody who intended to present, uh, in this delegation portion. So, uh, Mr. Bork, um, do you have a delegation there for us if they would, um, since we can't see you, if you're a phone-in caller, we can't see you. Uh, but if you'd just like to introduce yourself and, uh, as we do with all of our companies, we'll give you about five minutes or so, uh, to make your presentation account. Go ahead, call her.
Um, hi, is, are you referring to me?
Well, I only see, yeah, I only see a phone number, Ms. Roland, go ahead.
Okay, no, that's fine. Uh, my name's Jenny Roland, I'm a resident of Grand Prairie, I've grown up here, so I've seen it through everything, the eighties, the nineties, and up until now. Um, so, I just want to note, I'm a little disappointed with how the meeting went down because I did have to move around work for this and now I'm actually a half an hour late for work and I'm losing money. So I'm paying to speak to you guys, so I really appreciate you guys listening to me. Um, what I'm speaking out against is the photo radar or the automated transportation enforcement, ATE, that you guys, uh, um, that the city council has taken a contract with. Now, um, so what I'm doing is speaking out for all the residents of Ga- Grand Prairie that disagree with this. Research, research shows that photo radar is about revenue and not safety. Um, I have read one of the councils, uh, Councilor Dylan Brezzi, if I'm pronouncing that wrong, I apologize. Uh, he proves this in his points, in his article, I've been reading them and I, and I agree with a lot of it. I've been doing Facebook posts, social media, talking to people, so I have a, a lot of people agreeing with my points, but I'm going to communicate some of their points. But in the article, it states that every take, every single ticket that gets put out and receives a guilty verdict, the, the contractor gets paid. So it's fair to say, based on that, that revenue is, is made, based on how many tickets are put out. And, and that I don't like, um, I think that's unfair to us. I know, I, I travel extensively, I have family, um, in the UK, so I kind of see how different, different communities, different municipalities are, are, are controlling it. There, I'll, I'll touch on that later, but a lot of education is taking place and I find that that's something we lack on here in Grand Prairie. It's kind of like, hey, just ticket you, hey, just ticket you, here's a, here's a ticket, oh, we're doing an incentive for this, here's a ticket, here's a ticket. You know, and it, it, it's not about safety. Um, another argument that was made by a lot of GP citizens was the question on, you know, how do we prove who was operating that vehicle at the time of the ticket? You know, I have children that are starting to drive, I know that's something between me and them, I'm ultimately responsible because I'm the owner of the vehicle and I'm letting my kids drive. But at the same time, is it educating my kid not to run a stop sign or to, to stop for five seconds instead of two? And, you know, those kinds of technicalities and yes, I'm going to pay the ticket because it's three hundred and eighty-eight dollars, my son, you know, either way. The point is, is that that to me screams not about safety, it screams about, hey, let's just tack the owner of that vehicle and let's just, you know, make them financially responsible for that. So if it was about safety, we would be ticketing the driver, not the vehicle. Um, also to touch back on the UK, a lot of what they're doing is they're giving people an option of taking, uh, an in-house course. I think it's about a two-hour course, as much as I looked in, in lieu of paying. Because a lot of those tickets, especially right now, people, they don't have the option of doing payment plans or anything like that. They just have to pump out all the money or then you get fined and, and then your insurance goes up and then on and on and on. So it costs some people a lot of money. Um, so that's what they're doing in the UK and they had to respond to that because they had put up so many cameras in such a short amount of time that there was so much vandalism on these cameras, there was riots out in the streets because that's how they do it there, the people come together and they actually started destroying the cameras. So the city had to take them away and that's when they chose education to promote safety instead of it just being money, 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 money. Because I'm telling you with how much money these guys have, they don't care, they'll just pay it. And, you know, they're not going to listen to it, they're just going to be pissed off because they get a ticket, three weeks later in the mail, forget that they even did it, argue who was driving their, you know, it's just, it's just not nice to our residents. So I guess that's what I'm saying. And I do have a lot of people that agree with this and I wouldn't mind starting a petition or any direction if, if you guys give me guidance with that to really... I know you're trying to make the decision sooner than later, but a lot of people see this as being a limitation to living in Grand Prairie. But, yes, that is all I have to say.
Okay, okay, thanks, Ms. Roland. Uh, we do have an opportunity when we have delegations, if council have any questions, we obviously like to have a bit of a dialogue. Uh, we invite the presentations, but are there any councilors that have any questions from Ms. Roland? Uh, I see Councilor Brezzi.
Great, uh, well, first just want to say thank you, Ms. Roland, for calling in and thank you for waiting for us. I really appreciate when people talk to, talk to council. Uh, it's interesting you talk about the UK, my understanding is that education is a mandatory requirement of the UK for many tickets, not just an, an option. And I think that it's right that for a lot of people in this town, taking up their time instead of money might be, might be a bigger incentive. Um, I'm just, I just want to make sure I, I'm hearing, so are you, are you, are you saying, hey, I'd hope that, I hope that you guys get rid of photo, photo radar? Or are you saying, hey, I'm okay with photo radar, but I'd like to see some changes made to the program?
Definitely some changes made to the program. It, it would be nice if they could visually see who's driving the car instead of just pumping out tickets or give that sense. Like I know as my kids growing up and, and coming out and driving, I want them to be educated. And all there is is a safe driving thing that kind of helps with your insurance, but there's nothing progressive towards like long-term. Yes, you can pass the test, my son's excited, gonna pass the test, but that's not what it's all about, it's ongoing and there's always changes. I never have to, I nev- when I was born, we didn't have to wear seatbelts. So continuously, that's changing, you know, it's evolving, so we need to evolve with them and, and refresh our kids' memories.
Great, thank you.
Not only our kids, sorry.
Sure, Councilor Brezzi, any things further? Any, any other questions from, for Ms. Roland? I don't see any other council members, um, raising their hand, uh, moving, indicating that they have any questions. Okay, that being the case, Ms. Roland, thanks very much for your presentation, appreciate you sticking around. Um, it is a bit variable, uh, when we can start, we'd like to start on time. Um, but, uh, you know, this afternoon, we had some earlier discussion that didn't allow us to do that. We really appreciate your commitment to ensuring that you're able to be, be here and, uh, our apologies, apologies for, uh, making it late for work.
Perfect, thank you, that's fine.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, appreciate your time, have a good meeting.
Thank you, bye-bye. Okay, so this, uh, open delegation portion of our agenda does, uh, exist at every regular city council meeting. Um, uh, Mr. Bork, do we still have a computer workstation set up at City Hall? Is, are we still doing that or are we just giving people the opportunity to dial in?
Um, we'll make any arrangements, uh, if, uh, people send in the delegation request to accommodate, uh, their needs. Uh, we haven't had anyone appear at City Hall yet.
Okay, okay, thank you. Well, uh, so with that reminder to the community that if you want to, uh, appear before council and, uh, present to us at any of our council meetings, uh, there is a form on the city's website that you can fill in to give us those details and then that will help us connect you, uh, certainly while we're acting in this virtual manner. Um, but I hear that there are no others for today and so we'll, uh, close the delegation portion of our agenda and move on. Um, I guess the next up would be, uh, under report item seven point one, the twenty twenty weed inspector appointment. Um, this is, uh, a regular piece of business that, that's a part number two, uh, makes a motion that's aimed there. Sorry, I didn't see anybody raise a hand because my screen froze and you were all motionless, so there's, there's Councilor Beeson, thank you.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Givens, hopefully this doesn't persist. Uh, uh, I guess I'll put the motion, I'd move that council appoint Ms. Gwen Lewis, Ms. Rebecca McTavish, Ms. Lisa Mikayla and Ms. Madison Ball as weed inspectors under the Weed Control Act of Alberta until December thirty-first, twenty twenty. Should I do the second motion too, do you want to deal with this in two parts or all in one?
Yeah, I, I think we can do two parts unless anybody wants to have them split.
Sounds good. And to appoint the Infrastructure and Economic Development Committee as an independent appeals panel for twenty twenty. Uh, just speaking to this motion, uh, this is a pretty regular piece of business that we do at about this time of year as far as appointing of weed inspectors. We're mandated by the province to do this, uh, and I would encourage councils to take administration's, uh, best recommendations forward and, uh, we can get this off our plate, thanks.
Thanks, Councilor Beeson. Any discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, then I will call for the vote, all in favor. Thank you, that looks unanimous to me. Uh, um, then we'll move on to item seven point two, automated traffic enforcement, um, agreement renewal update. Um, administration previously introduced this topic at a council committee at the hall where council gave some, uh, direction to administration on what terms, uh, considerations we'd like to see in that renewal, uh, discussion. Uh, there's a recommendation in front of council. I don't know, um, Ms. Hughes, you're the acting director, uh, head administration, kind of introducing this item at all or are we just looking for motion to council?
I'm just seeking a motion from council at this point.
Okay, okay, thank you, thanks, Ms. Hughes. Uh, so council, we did have a wholesome discussion, discussion of this at our council committee at the whole meeting. Uh, we're looking for motion to get this on the table, I think I saw Councilor O'Toole.
Thank you very much, Mayor Givens, I'm going to make a motion to direct the administration to proceed with the finalizing of the automatic traffic enforcement with the recommendation in our report.
Okay, thank you very much, so they, as presented, um, that is of course open for discussion and debate. Um, I will, I just should reference, um, at the committee at the whole meeting, council did direct administration, um, to renew for a three-year term, um, to consider the, an increase to the amount of, um, visible or overt enforcement and to consider whether it was possible to include a educational component in the enforcement. And so, uh, those would be the terms that administration would be looking to negotiate in to any renewal unless council gives any other direction here. Is there anything further, any discussion? You're just muted, Councilor Clayton.
Okay, thank you, Mayor Givens. Um, I wanted to amend this motion, uh, on item two to only be a two-year term. So the motion as stands, uh, with the, um, as recommended, however, I would like to amend the motion to include a two-year term.
So I'll take that as a motion in order, uh, to direct administration to negotiate a two-year renewal of the contract. Um, that's open for discussion and debate. If there are any other, if I make a discussion, if there are any other amendments, uh, that we do them subsequent to this one. Uh, so we'll deal with this one, discussion and debate on this amendment, um, and then any other subsequent discussion and debate on any other potential amendment. Okay, so on Councilor Clayton's amendment directing administration to negotiate a two-year extension.
Yeah, I can speak to the motion or I can wait, sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, yeah, Councilor Plot.
Actually, if, if Councilor Clayton is willing to speak to the motion, I'd like to hear the reasoning behind, uh, behind your motion.
Sure, so, yeah, Councilor Clayton, why don't you, uh, sort of introduce it and then we'll go through the debate.
Perfect. So, um, as, as this council and, and previous council has done, uh, a lot of work on, uh, ATE and traffic enforcement and, and with the Community Safety Initiative as initially set out last term, uh, so, you know, six, uh, probably four years ago now, I think it was, um, there, there has been substantial, uh, impacts in our community in regards to reducing, um, uh, intersection collisions. We have had, um, significant, uh, reduction in, um, in accidents. And so there are results showing that this plan is working. However, there are a few concerns and, uh, in regards to, um, overt and covert vehicles as well as, um, payment options. There's also concerns on, on what the province's stance looks like in the future for ATEs as a whole. And I think at this point, a two-year term, um, it, it, it doesn't tie up the municipality as long into this program and it just gives us a little more flexibility, um, as we go forward. So in my opinion, a two-year term, uh, just seems a little more flexible and, and, and what would be best for the city at this time.
Okay, thanks, Councilor Clayton, so we can have discussion and debate, um, on Councilor Clayton's amendment, Councilor Plot and then Councilor Blackburn.
Thanks, Mayor Givens, um, I was back and forth on this, the more I thought about it in the hearing, uh, earlier, I, I will be supporting this. I think for me, originally I wanted to give a new council potentially more time, but the more I thought about it, the best time would have been as soon as possible in your term in some ways. So this will come out six months after the new council is elected. If, unless something changes, this will be a topical thing yet again at an election campaign time. And I think that's a great time for the new council to actually own whether they're going to sign their own three-year contract, the four-year contract and how they want to deal with, with this moving forward. So I would actually rather the new council have an earlier say in this and be at the seat earlier than we are, for one reason. The second one that's hitting me more in some conversation we had today and just, uh, I think I got to thank Councilor Beeson to get my brain going that way. And I'm not sure if that was intentions, but, uh, I'm not sure a three-year term is the best thing for a city of Grand Prairie. Two years, we might have a very different look at what ATE looks like. We might decide at some point, maybe we do want to take this in-house, maybe we want to keep our own staff if the economic downturn has an impact on our staffing. So I would rather give us options down the road. I don't think that three-year changes anything other than for Global. Uh, it didn't sound like it had an impact to our organization. I just don't know why we need to go to a three-year term. And, and I appreciate that we were the ones that put this here, um, but we're debating it now and, and I would actually really hope the council supports letting the new council have the ability to discuss this as soon as possible in their term, not waiting till it's almost halfway through their term and then kicking the ball down the field to the next council. So I'd like to give the new council a chance to own this and us the ability to, to pivot if we want to. So I hope everybody supports a two-year.
Thanks, Councilor Buck, Councilor Blackburn.
Thank you, Mayor Givens. Um, I, I'm going to, uh, speak in opposition to the amendment. Um, first of all, it's been proven over the time that we've, uh, been contracting with Global that it works and it works for the purpose of safety. Um, I, I don't, I, 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 I guess all I want to say is that I, I'm very confident that it will continue to work. I know that over the next couple of years, we, uh, we don't know, as Councilor Plot suggests, we don't know what things are going to look like for the city, especially after dealing with this COVID-nineteen crisis and the number of people that we have had to lay off and in fact, the number of people that we have actually let go. Um, I, I don't think that there's an opportunity for us to be very successful in bringing in, bringing the, the project in-house. Um, anything that we've read so far suggests that having it in-house would be far more costly and far less effective anyway. And so I think that we ought to demonstrate our commitment and our, um, uh, confidence in the program that we are using now and go ahead and do it for another three years. Uh, I'm certain that if a new council, uh, came along that wanted to do something different, uh, and they were adamant about it, there would be ways to get into that contract and make changes to it. So in the meantime, let's, uh, let's show our confidence and, uh, and make this a three-year term, thank you.
Thanks, Councilor Blackburn, uh, do I see Councilor O'Toole? Oh, uh, Councilor Beeson and then Councilor O'Toole.
Well, Councilor O'Toole can go ahead of me if you'd like, uh...
No, I, I think he was after you.
Okay, fair enough, thank you, Mayor Givens. Um, I, I'm not, I'm going to speak in opposition to this motion, not that I'm strongly opposed to it, but largely the notion that, um, that, uh, photo radar in itself is a hot-button political issue. Either you like it, uh, and you're like it's increasing safety and the stats are there to back it up or you hate it because you got a ticket and you feel like there should be a better way to deal with, uh, with speeders rather than the three-week-in-the-mail mail-out. Um, the reason though, I'm, I'm going to speak out against this is because, uh, I, I think this will largely impact our next, uh, municipal election. Um, and, uh, just speaking from the last municipal election, uh, there was lots of conversation, discussion about ending the photo radar program and that seemed to dominate a lot of, um, more conservative threads, I guess. Everybody likes getting tickets, so I'm not going to politicize it in, in any way. But, uh, the discussion at elections really should be about how we can make our community better and bringing ideas to the table. It shouldn't be a mad rush to end the program because a segment of our population doesn't like that. And I think by having this contract only go two years, it's actually going to create its own issue during the election time where instead of talking about how we're going to make our community better or how new councilors may make our community better, it's going to be, uh, you need to end this program. And I think there's, it's going to put an undue pressure on the next council to end the program at that time, six months into their term because they promised to, rather than take a really thoughtful, hard and deliberate approach towards whether or not they agree with photo radar, uh, outside of the public pressure. Uh, the stats that we have are showing that it's working, um, and, uh, you know, I won't be heartbroken if this motion passes. Uh, I just don't want to see our next election turn into something that is more or less about itself rather than the community. So, uh, for all those reasons, I will not be supporting this motion, thank you.
Thanks, Councilor Beeson, Councilor O'Toole, then Councilor Brezzi.
Thank you very much, Mayor Givens, uh, I will not be supporting this as well. Uh, and when you look back at, uh, the, when you got elected, some of you new ones here, uh, you know that the first six months were the real steep learning curve and, uh, that's the last thing you want to deal with is a high-entry, uh, topic like this. We know it works, everybody agrees that it works. Does it need some changes? Yes, it did, and we're about to make those changes. And I think two, uh, two years is not enough time, uh, and I would, I would like to go with the recommendation of three years. And, uh, for all the things that have been said, uh, in a positive way here, I'm totally in agreement. I don't want this to be an election topic, uh, you can come, uh, you've still got a few years left in your, uh, in the new term for the new people that are going to be elected to make those changes, but I think, uh, three years is an adequate contract for doing business. And, thank you.
Okay, thanks, Councilor O'Toole, Councilor Brezzi, then Councilor Freeson.
Great, thank you. I think for me, it really is, as, as we talked about, setting up the next council for success, which I appreciate hearing, but I really think that a two-year term sets that council up for success in the best way. And what I'd point out is this was a very hot election issue last election and there were a number of candidates where this was a big part of their campaign, saying they're going to abolish photo radar and those candidates didn't get elected. And I think that was a very clear message to me that this community, so, doesn't, that, uh, majority of this community doesn't want to see photo radar gone, but still, I think that this community does want to see reformed photo radar. I think it's interesting that when you read, um, Alberta put out a photo radar review of photo radar across Alberta and it really found that we're lagging behind best practices of a lot of other jurisdictions across the world. And that's something I've definitely seen as I've read academic research myself that we're lagging behind a lot of places. So yes, it works, yes, there's a lot of room for improvement, but what's kind of frustrating to me is just the timing of where this is in our term. We're in the back half of our term, this is the first time we're touching, we're really substantially touching this and it's kind of the only touch we're going to get on this. And as you all know, I've got very strong ideas of where I think this program should go and it's based on the evidence I've seen in other communities as best as I can gather it. But I don't know how the changes I want to have will impact our community. And I really do kind of regret and wish that I had a second touch on this while I, while I know I'm on council so that we as a team can make the changes that we think need to be made. And then as the people that made those changes, we'd have a second touch on it, say, yes, those really worked or they weren't enough, or maybe those were really bad ideas and we need to go back. And I think that what this does by changing this to two years is this gives the other, the next council the opportunity to touch this twice if it wants to touch it twice and really do a thoughtful approach to making this program the program that it should be for our community and being a world leader instead of a world lager on this program. So I hope this motion will pass.
Okay, thanks very much, Councilor Brezzi, Councilor...
Uh, thank you, Mayor Givens. Um, I, I will support this motion for a two-year term rather than a, a three-year term on the contract. Um, the, the timing does, it, it, it's not ideal, but, you know, there's disadvantages if we go to the three years. There's, the timing may never be completely ideal. So, but what this two-years does for us is it allows us to set up conditions such that we can have a, an even more thoughtful, um, approach to how we use ATE. As Councilor Brezzi said, there are some best practices that we are lagging behind in. And there are other things like our metrics that we do very, very well. I think Global's a good partner to work on, um, making Grand Prairie the, um, the, the best standard for how to use ATE and two-years gives us time to be, be able to, um, set up what that looks like and then next council can make a thoughtful decision about it with, um, with improved standards, improved practices and good metrics behind them. So I'll be supporting this motion, thank you for making it, uh, Councilor Clayton.
Thanks, Councilor Freeson, I see Councilor Minha is in the queue, I'll just, uh, say that I, uh, will, won't support the motion. Um, my concern really is about where it comes up in a council term. I think in that first six months of the council term between orientation, which is the... I think in that first six months of the council term between orientation, which is more substantial this last time, and will be more substantial next time, budget, strategic planning, I think that all happens pretty quickly, and I really am concerned about that load on a council and their ability to make a thoughtful, informed decision as any council members have referenced, when they're also trying to be thoughtful and informed about city's overall budget, and thoughtful and informed about the strategic plan that they want to set for their entire term. I'm worried about the sort of ability of this issue to suck up all the air in the room when councils need to focus on those large things. I think a three-year term is reasonable because it does still put it in the first half of that council term, so that next council will get to deal with it much earlier than our council has. I think that's appropriate. But I think the two-years is just too close to that onboarding of the new council. And so for those reasons, I won't support it. I appreciate the discussion and dialogue here, but yeah, for me, it's just a little comfort of setting up the next council to be able to handle what will be a full plate at the start of the term. Councilor Minhoss?
Thank you, Mayor Minhoss. I will not support either because there's a lot of flexibility with province change, I think, from like sixty to seventy or seventy-five, eighty. That city needed this service then, or province changed a lot. And also, they mentioned that the contract can be break if it doesn't work out right. There's a thing to be done, so they've got flexibility to, if we need to renew a contract earlier or go away, I think. So I think three-years is more flexible than two-years. Everything else has been said, so I don't need to be. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, thanks, Council Minhoss. Okay, so we've had just about everybody with an opportunity on this. I'll come back to you, Council Palat.
Thanks, Mayor Given.
Just making that observation that we have all had a chance.
Yeah, no, I just want to, I want a little bit of a pushback about, because it sounds like this salary has become more of a campaigning, and for me, that wasn't the intent of what I was talking about. And I was actually somebody that didn't want to have photo radar come through, and I could tell within three months of being on council, it would be silly not to have photo radar. And so I don't think this being a council, this shouldn't be a conversation about setting up a next committee, a council, other than the points Council Bressi made about them having the ability to have an impact sooner on this. I think we're not doing the next council a service by waiting a year and a half. Anybody that gets on council better learn real quick. You make tough decisions and you make them soon. And I don't think letting them have a year and a half to stick around some decisions is a good thing. I think that's what you want when people are running for council. They're going to get on, they should be able to make those tough decisions within six months. If it's important, then they should get educated. And if they would have got educated, they'd see this program works. And so I really do hope that we can do it two-year, guys, because otherwise, I can't support the motion at all, and I don't want to see this motion not go through.
Okay. Thanks, Council Palat. Any other discussion or debate before I go to Council Clayton to close? You don't see any, then it's Council Clayton. I'll go to you to close on your amendment.
Thanks, Mayor Given. Let me be clear in the sense that photo radar, by, in my opinion, amending this motion to go from three-year to two-year, isn't at all to say that I don't think the program isn't working, to say that the program needs to be stopped in two years. This is truly an opportunity for the next council to have a discussion earlier in the term than later. The point being, as Council Palat just mentioned, if you're not educated on photo radar during the election, it's your own fault. It takes you, you know, you'll have six months then if you weren't for some reason educated, so you'll have six months to get educated on it then. If you take a year and a half to get educated and make a decision, at that point, you've spent a year and a half in time of making decisions that if you don't, if you went out in your campaign and said, I don't support this, then I think that you should have already had that decision. So whatever council's flexibility, whatever council's opinion is, is one thing, the flexibility to be able to get in and out of a contract needs to be earlier in the term than later, in my opinion. I think that a two-year contract is very fair, reasonable. It doesn't affect the cost, goes two years, three years. I mean, at some point, the contract could be renewed right away in six months, and then the council has that contract going for the rest of the three and a half years of their term. So I think that two-years is very reasonable. Bressa handcuffs a next council into a contract that was decided by this council, in my opinion, isn't fair or reasonable. So I encourage councilors to support the amendment.
Okay. Thanks for that close, Council Clayton. So we'll call for a vote on Council Clayton's amendment. All those in favor of the amendment to the two-year term? See, Council Clayton, Bressi, and Palat. Okay, and opposed, oh, and Frees, excuse me, thank you, sorry, thanks, Council Frees. And opposed? Okay, and that would be five to four. Okay, that, thank you, that motion does not carry. Are there any other amendments for the direction to administration to negotiate and finalize this contract agreement? Any other points, Council?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Yeah, I've got a couple I'd like to raise, and one is I had moved that we amend the direction to administration to include forty percent of enforcement hours on an annual basis be done by overt vehicles. And just to speak to, just to speak to that, I appreciate that there's, that there's discussion between Global and administration that there, that overt and covert will be part of the strategy, but I think that I'd like to have the confidence of putting a minimum target, target on that and knowing that's going to happen. And something that's really important to understand about my motion is I'm staying on an annual basis, and because that's, I want to give a lot of freedom to, maybe they say, hey, we really want to focus during September back to school, we want to load a bunch of covert vehicles then, but we, but we've got a different reason to have a different strategy in January. So it's really a specific motion staying on an annual basis to give maximum flexibility, but still be able to assure our community that overt vehicles are a big part of our strategy. And again, I won't go into length about why I think that's important, but just reminding council that the two, that in academic studies, the two key success for a program is that it's both publicized and unpredictable. That when somebody's brand-new to town, we know about fifty percent of the tickets we give out are for people that aren't in Grand Prairie. I think them driving into town and seeing an enforcement vehicle in plain sight is a really important part of telling them, slow down. At the same time, you also don't want them to know, oh, I only have to slow down when I see a vehicle. So I think a forty percent mix, forty-six percent mix has that right blend of overt versus covert.
Okay. Okay, thanks for that, Council Bressi. Thanks for that introduction, that amendment and the introduction to it. Council Blackburn and then Council Minhoss. Council Blackburn?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I'm going to oppose this amendment. The, one of the things that we as a council are charged to do is to direct administration from time to time on what to do, but not on how to do it. We leave it to the, we leave it to their professional expertise to know the best way to handle the situation. And so what we would bring to the table in this particular case is, we want to see the contract require that there be overt and covert vehicles. In the discussions that we had in the past with Global and with Mr. Steer, it was indicated that there are times and places where it is more appropriate to have overt vehicles, and there are times when it may not be. And for us to put a number on how often they have to do either, to me, is getting in the weeds and getting in the way of them being effective in administering the program. So I would suggest that we stick with the idea that it be part of the contract, but not be specific about how much, how much of either type of enforcement is appropriate. Thank you.
Thanks, Council Blackburn. I have Council Minhoss and then Council Palat.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I think Mr. Clyde said quite a few things, but to me, I'm not favored to the radar camera anyway. But it's most things bothering me when they go, people go to work in the morning, or they're coming back from work in the evening, they put the radar on the Jersey Road or Hundred Eighth Street. And that, I don't know if we can control that or not, but that's the time people coming from home, work to home, they're not, they might be speeding five kilometer, ten kilometer, and going to work in the morning, that's more bothering me. So it, I don't know, when they negotiate, they can see those hours, they can put it somewhere else where they need it to be. But the motion, they're saying it, I don't know if they're going to support it or not, but that's my point is the photo radar sometimes is a cash cow, you know, when they put in money on the people going to the work.
Thanks, Council Minhoss. I see Council Palat and then Council Frees.
Thanks, Mayor Given. I will be supporting this motion ironically. I was thinking we'll do one for thirty percent, so I'm glad that Council Bressi was more aggressive than me. But anyways, I think, I mean, I agree with Council Blackburn's concerns. They did make it pretty clear that they wanted, they wanted to be able to have the ability. But I think forty percent still gives them lots of flexibility to choose their times and places of when they want to use one or the other. I don't think it chokes them on their ability to do that. I think the biggest thing for me, though, is I really want to show our community that we want to be more transparent about ATE. There's a lot of frustration that we're trying to hide behind signs and just be those, you know, that this cash cow thing, and I don't believe it's a cash cow, I said it earlier, I don't. I think at one point I thought it was that. It works. I've seen the data. I really do think this is helping our community be safe, much more safe. But I think if we can do our options of being more transparent and showing the community that we want to be transparent with this and we're not trying to hide, I think that's something we should support. And if we don't put minimums in, we're back to where we're at the whim of Global. And that's another frustration point for the community is, a lot of people feel Global has all the control, and they don't, obviously, but without putting in any minimum target, they kind of do on this one. So I think we need to put a minimum target in or else we really don't know if they actually achieve it or not. So thanks for that.
Thanks, Council Palat. So in the queue, I have Council Frees, then then Council Pieson, then?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I won't support this, the target of specifying a target of what the ratio of covert to overt vehicles looks like without a number that's demonstrated to be the effective number. Us plugging one in like that, I don't think does any good, and in fact, it may do harm. What we know is that the mix of vehicles appears to be effective. We have heard that there is a time and a place for them when they are more effective than other times and place. And depending on, you know, as we look to achieve our ultimate goal of safety, which is what this is truly about, if that number is less than forty percent and we put it in there, I don't, you know, why would we hold to that? Without having a really strong reference point for saying forty percent, I don't, I don't think at this point it's any of council business to prescribe what that ratio is. Thanks.
Thanks, Council Frees. So I had Council Pieson and then Council Orto.
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. Thank you for your comments, Council Frees. I actually agree with you, but I'm sort of with Council Minhoss. I'm on the fence on this one here. Perhaps we might be able to clarify some stuff because we're just basing our opinions on this number. I was wondering if someone from administration had the knowledge or the number of the percentage of covert to overt vehicles that we currently employ through the existing contract.
So covert operations aren't a specific part of the contract right now, but I see the enforcement services managers there and available. Mr. Kokesh, would you like to speak to that?
Thank you, Mayor Given. At the present time, they're all our overt vehicles. We do not have any, we marked, marked photo enforcement vehicles.
Hmm, okay, thank you, Mr. Kokesh. Really appreciated. I'm hearing a lot of echo of me.
Yeah, Kelly, we'll just have to get you to put, go on to you.
No, I really appreciate that, Kelly, Mr. Kokesh. They're all overt. So part of me is thinking, why did we put covert into the contract? Like, I know that we wanted to specify that these needed to be visible for people to see. In my opinion, I've never really found the system to be covert. I've always seen overt vehicles unmarked or marked. Perhaps that's what we're talking about here, marked versus unmarked cars. But I guess in my, in my estimation, and from by my knowledge, the training and the regulation of this entire system by Global Traffic Group is done by the province, and currently, they're conducting a thorough review on the photo radar processes. From my understanding, they're totally against covert vehicles. So I guess I'm even more on the fence now because we're adding a covert aspect to this when it doesn't currently exist, and I'm not sure if we all were aware of that or just sort of got caught up in it. But for the reasons of not wanting to meddle, and as Council Blackburn so poetically said, get in the weeds and get in the way, I don't want to get in the weeds and get in the way of our administration and their ability to negotiate without having full knowledge of what we're actually looking at in this. So I guess I'm kind of saying I'm leaning towards not supporting the motion. Sorry, Council Bressi, but perhaps if we want to get rid of that covert aspect, that's another amendment to be made soon.
So let's just make sure that we all have the same terminology. Right now, the agreement, the contract and the operation is really, sets the locations and the number of hours worked across the system. There is no, in the current contract, or the way this program currently operates, there is no requirement for any vehicle to have any overt marking. And so in the, and so that is, I guess, by definition, they're quote-unquote covert today. One hundred percent covert because they're not intentionally, intentionally and explicitly marked. That's how it is today. And I think the intention of the motion is to say, at minimum, forty percent of the hours over the course of an entire year should be operated in vehicles that are intentionally and explicitly marked in some way as being photo radar. So it's actually increased in the amount of, the intent of the motion is to increase the amount of exposure that those vehicles would have. Just to be really, yeah, I could, the overt and covert means kind of, I think we're getting mixed there. But so the intent of the motion is to say that forty percent of the hours over the course of the year should be operated in vehicles that are in some way explicitly marked as being photo enforcement. Just to run all in the same term.
Yeah, thanks for that, Bill.
Um, Council Orto, I hear it?
Yeah. Thank you, Mayor Given. I just got a little bit of clarification I'd like to ask for. It was stated a few times that we dedicate, or we select the sites. I was under the understanding when we were in our council committee of the whole that the RCMP recommends sites where these locations should be. Is that correct?
Yes, that's one hundred percent correct. The RCMP has a justification sheet that's publicly available on all the sites, and city council does not pick any of the sites.
Thank you very much. I will not be supporting this either. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Council Orto. Any further discussion or debate on Council Bressi's motion before we go to him to close? I'll just, I'll say that I will be supporting the motion. I think the intent, I appreciate the flexibility built in there to say that over the course of a year, there may be a period over the year during check-stop times or other periods that administration, for safety reasons, would decide it would be best to operate in those highly visible vehicles. And there may be other periods of the year where they decide that that's to be less visible. I appreciate that flexibility. I think that this is a reasonable number. My reflection is that a significant amount of the time that the automated enforcement happens is actually in school zones. And I think that's the area where having more overt and easily identifiable enforcement is a good thing. And so I am supportive of the motion and happy to see it pass. Council Bressi?
Great, thank you. Yeah, just to, just closer, I just wanted to clarify one thing that the question was asked of, is this the right ratio and why this ratio? And the reason I picked forty percent was because, for me, about fifty percent is the right ratio, and I'm getting that based on, that's the recommendation I've seen in a few academic studies on this, and it also just seems right that you balance them fifty-fifty, but also want to give administration flexibility in this. So I don't want them to go, oh, shoot, it's December twenty-second, and we need to hit our fifty bang on, so we need to make sure we're spending three and a half hours this month doing this, two hours this month doing that. So that's the reason I picked the forty percent is because ideally, I'd like to see it about fifty percent, but it just felt too prescriptive and not enough flexibility built in if I had structured the motion as fifty percent. So just people are wondering why that's the number I picked. That's the reason I picked that number for this motion.
So that was the intent to close? Was there something that was missing, Council Frees?
I, yeah, can I just hear the amendment? Because I might want to make a friendly tweet to the amendment. If I could hear it read, please.
Ms. Kavashewski?
Absolutely. Thank you Mayor Given.
Uh, I'm sorry, if you're doing a recording?
Thank you. So the motion to amend from Counsel Bressi is, uh, council amend the motion to strike as presented and insert with the inclusion of forty percent overt vehicle usage on an annual basis.
And sorry, you, you froze up there. Was the word minimum in there?
Uh, no. Was, was minimum intended?
So yeah, minimum's my intention. It's not the prescriptive. You're going to do forty sixty. It's the minimum and I'd like the reflexibility. So yeah, I'd like, my intent was to have the word minimum in there.
Yeah, and I remember that from, from the original motion, I think. Counsel Friesen, there you go. So you've got it. The minimum of forty percent overt enforcement over the course of the year. Okay?
Thank you.
Okay. Um, okay, thank you. So Counsel Bressi's closed. We've got that clarification of the motion that we're voting on. So I will call for the vote. All those in favor of Counselor Bressi's motion? Okay. Thank you. Um, I see one, two, three, four, five in favor and opposed. Uh, all those opposed? And four opposed? Thank you. That motion does carry. Um, and so, uh, were there any other items with respect to this, uh, before we went on to the main motion as amended? Yeah. Counsel Bressi, go ahead.
Well, thank you. Yeah. If nobody else is going to get in, then the other one that I, that I'd move is, um, is to, to amend the main motion to also say, um, proceeding finalizing an automated traffic enforcement agreement with Global Traffic Group, the amendment we just made. And I'd also like to say with payment terms not tied to fine revenue. And it's kind of a different motion than was maybe contemplated in the report where the report talks about fixed, about fixed payments. And for me, I don't, I, I want to give flexibility to this in terms of if there are modifiers that administration wants to add on to, on to it, such as we're going to track traffic stats or we're going to track total traffic. There's, there are modifiers that I could support being tied on to this. But for me, it's just that I'm not comfortable having this contract where their revenue is based on fine revenue. It might be based on other things. So that's why I'm not using the term fixed payment. But for me, I really hope that council will help our public have confidence that when Global is picking where to put a vehicle, that it's for public safety reasons. It's not because that's where they can get the most tickets out. And I think that the best way to help the public have confidence in that is for the public to know that Global's bottom line isn't impacted by the number of tickets that goes out. It's impacted by us as a satisfied customer being confident that they're all about safety, not about revenue.
Okay. Thanks Counsel Bressi. Uh, some motions in order. I will go to Counsel, Counsel Blackburn?
Thank you Mayor Given. Uh, just first, a quick clarification from, uh, Counsel Bressi. Uh, does your motion exclude, um, uh, the, the option to stick with the, uh, percentage split? Or does it include that as an option in negotiation?
No. So the intent, the intent of my motion is that their payments are not based on fine revenue. So right now with this revenue split, their money is based on how much fine revenue there is to split. So I don't think that that, the status quo would meet the intent of my motion. It's that payment, the payment we make to them is not tied to, to fine revenue in any way.
Thank you. Well, in that case, I, I do have to oppose the motion. Um, a couple of reasons. Uh, one of them brought up by administration is the fact that there is a risk that there would be times when we will owe money to, uh, Global, um, uh, when we have not received, uh, enough revenue to cover that payment, uh, if it's on a fixed, um, rate. If it's on some other rate, which I just really can't imagine, um, then that might not be a problem, but, uh, it could be. Uh, the more important reason, and I, I'm going to sound a little bit cynical here, but I, I just have to say this. There are times when people in the general public do not understand the full picture when it comes to decisions that are made, uh, for law enforcement or indeed for many other things that, uh, our administration or even we as council do. And I think that although it may be their perception that, uh, this looks like a money grab more often than not, um, I believe that it simply is not that. And, uh, uh, I, I think that if we stick with the kind of, um, payment scheme that we have stuck with in the past, we are confirming that, uh, first of all, uh, we trust Global and our administration and the work they do together to make sure that any decisions that are made are based on, uh, the need for safety and not the need for, uh, cash flow. Um, so, uh, I, I think it's, it's, it's the best way to go is to use the kind of payment scheme that we've used in the past. We don't see anybody else in the province going with anything different. It's not something that other communities have contemplated. And, uh, I truly think that it's not something that we ought to be contemplating either. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks Counsel Blackburn. Did I see anybody else, uh, in the queue on this one? Um, Counsel O'Toole?
Yeah. I, uh, I strongly oppose the, uh, the mo- the amendment. I think that, uh, I'm quite happy with the way the process is done. Uh, and, uh, I'm, I'm on board with Counsel Blackburn. I think, uh, I don't, uh, feel, I don't feel right about the motion at all. Thank you.
Thanks Counsel O'Toole. Um, I see Counsel Plott, I'll just say that, um, I'm also not going to support the motion. I think this is a case of where the public perception, um, based on less than full understanding and information about the program, um, is, um, is incorrect. Um, and, and misses important parts. Um, our administration has highlighted to us that, uh, through the course of the last contract, uh, city administration significantly reduced the number of hours worked. Um, and so we have that lever to control the, the number of fines that are, I guess, levied. Um, we can dial that back. Uh, the RCMP here in control of the location. Um, of choosing where to go and our administration, the RCMP, um, are in control of how often the different locations are worked. And so, you know, it, there is, I would just say it like we hear it out there, there is a perception that, um, the operator finds a great spot and goes and sits there all the time just to rack up the ticket. Uh, and the truth is that our city administration and the RCMP are fully in control of all the levers that, uh, can stop that from happening. Uh, they can reduce the number of hours. They could eliminate a site. Um, and they also are in control of when the contractor rotates to different sites. So while I appreciate that, uh, a move like this to decouple the cost of the, of the operation from fine revenue would address that public perception, the public perception is based on faulty information. And this change would come with real risk to city taxpayers. And so, uh, and that risk would be that, um, we end up stuck in a contract where we're ending up paying more, uh, than the city receives at all. Um, and so this is intended to be a break even service, um, you know, largely, uh, it has provided revenue, but the city, uh, has seen that revenue decline over time. If we were stuck in a contract where, uh, the city ended up having, uh, a substantial cost, I think that's just too big a risk for me based on what is fundamentally a faulty perception, um, that's out in the public. Um, that's how people feel that it is, um, that, that, that fishing, go fishing expedition is possible. But the truth is, it isn't possible through the, the way that system is set up. Um, and council members, I think, have enough information to know that that's the case. Um, and making a move like this just to address a public perception that's based on faulty info, I, I think it would, it would be a poor decision. So I won't be able to support the motion. Sorry, Counsel Plott, I think I had you next, Michael.
Uh, thanks Mayor Given. Um, just a question for administration. If, if this were to pass, I, I'm just trying to get my head around what the contract would look like, how we'd write this. It, it wouldn't be on revenue, would it be a, a monthly management fee? Or I'm just trying to get my head around how this would look.
Mr. Kokesh?
Um, I believe this would be based on, uh, uh, monthly average in percentage wise, similar to what we've been, uh, doing as a, uh, funding split on the revenue. So, um, I'd worked out a model where, um, where, uh, it would just be based on the yearly average per month that we have collected or paid them over the course of the last three years. And I, I believe that the, uh, payment would have to be in, pretty close to what that is. Um, of course, we don't have a, we don't know what the future holds, of course. Um, I can guess and I can extrapolate a little bit, but, uh, there is some risk to that as well. Um, we have to deal with the finance people, um, in putting this all together. And they too are struggling with, uh, exactly how that is going to look. But, um, if that is the direction we receive, we'll, we'll move forward that, with that.
Okay. I'm kind of on the fence on this one. I guess I prefer Counsel Bressi to steer me over and finish my mind. If we're using this as a bargaining tactic to work with Global to say, hey, we're not going to pay you percentage of revenue, but we're going to pay you so much to manage our sites, I, I probably could get behind something like that because I think this is a very lucrative contract. Let's not kid ourselves. Um, this is a great contract for Global and there's lots of people who would love to be in this space. And this IT space and safety space is going to change lots next few years. So I think by giving them a three-year contract, which it sounds like this will reward it, it's a very good contract. So I just need to understand the intent of it a little more by Counsel Bressi. Yes, for me.
Okay. Thanks Counsel Plott. Counsel Bressi, let you, uh, address that. But they did have, I think, Counsel, uh, Counsel O'Toole in the queue as well? Yeah. Okay, go ahead.
Do you want me to go? Uh, Mayor Given, I just wanted to thank you for saying what you did after, for that response. I was trying to get the words out and I was sort of tongue tied, but I, I do believe that what you were saying, uh, in response to this is, uh, very true. And, uh, I wish people, when it comes to the vote, uh, uh, not support this. Thank you.
Thanks Counsel O'Toole. Um, Counsel Bressi, um, did you want to respond to Counsel Plott's question?
Yeah, I'm happy to, but I'm also hoping to close. So maybe I'll see the floor and I'll make sure I get that in my close if there's other people that want to get in.
Okay. Yeah. Thanks, thanks for that Counsel Bressi. Thanks for that Counsel Bressi. Was there anybody else that, uh, wanted to get in on, uh, Counsel Bressi's amendment proposed that the, um, payment, uh, be, uh, decoupled or not attached to the fine revenue? I don't see anybody else raising their hand. Uh, and if there wasn't, then I'll go to Counsel Bressi to close. Counsel Bressi?
Great. Well, first, my apologies to get an unflattering look into my family as you hear my kids in the background. I'm sure that all parents will understand that. Um, uh, so I, I think the, the few things that I, that I'd say is, this is the way that a lot of the public's feeling right now, probably, as we talk with them. I think a few things that I'd maybe push back on is, uh, first of all, this idea of, yeah, there is a risk with this that the city ends up outlawing cash on this program. But at the same time, I'd say if this is about safety, what's the difference between that and edgy safety program we put in? We ever say, we're putting that crosswalk so we can generate revenue or we're putting, or we're putting more RCMP officers down, patrolling our downtown core so we can make, make more money on it? I think I'm, I'm pretty comfortable with, with that financial risk given that this is a safety program. Also push back a little bit in terms of saying that this is just a public perception issue. If they knew more, that they'd have confidence in, in this program and that revenue decisions are never made. I'd say that as a counselor who knows a lot more than any member of the public probably does, I'm very confident that overall, for the most part, very frequently, it's only safety being thought about. That being said, we're talking about a private company whose whole bottom line is tied to the amount of fine revenue, who is not under the control of, control of council and who does not have every decision scrutinized by staff. And to say that revenue could, that revenue calculations never, ever, ever enter into it, I don't have that rock solid confidence that some of you might have. So it's hard for me to say to the public they should have that. For me, for the most part, I don't think it is, but not ever. The last thing, just to, to address Counselor Plott and asking what benefit does this bring besides public confidence? I think another for me is, one of the, the big advantages of using Global is I really do appreciate the data they generate for us. I love the map we get where you can see the speeds going in different, in different zones. And some of the other data they've provided that we'd never be able to generate if we were in-house. Well, I like if we're talking about, hey, your revenue is going to be tied to safety outcomes. It's proven, it's proven to us that you're making our streets safer because you might actually cost us money instead of being a revenue generator. I think that all of a sudden it becomes, there's incentive on Global's part to prove with their data how and where they're making us sa- safer. And I think we could see better outcomes, both in our ability to make decisions and also enforcement mechanisms. If we change the incentive from being, uh, borrowed as many fines as possible, and we're always going to keep you because you're a net, net revenue generator from us, for us, to, hey, prove to us that you're making us safer because we're worried we might lose money on you. I think that incentive is different and I think that could get us better, better outcomes and better data. So for that reason, I hope the council will support this amendment.
Okay. Thanks Counsel Bressi for that close. Um, we'll move on to the vote because we're all clear on the motion. Or at least the, the intent of the motion. Okay. So I'm asking, not seeing anybody asking to have it read back, so I'll assume that we are. And I'll call for the vote. All in favor of Counsel Bressi's amendment? All those in favor? Thank you. I see one, I see two in favor. Okay, thank you. And opposed? Okay. And I see the other seven opposed then. Thank you. Thank you. Uh, that motion does not carry. Um, are there any other, uh, points on this before we get back to the main motion as amended? I don't see any, uh, going once, going twice. Okay. Okay. Then we'll go back to the main motion as amended. And, uh, we will give one last opportunity, any discussion or debate on the main motion as amended. Maybe Ms. Kavashewski, could you just highlight, uh, where the main motion stands now after the amendment?
Thank you Mayor Given. Yes, I can. Uh, just let me scroll back to the top. So the motion, um, including the amendment will read council direct administration to proceed with finalizing an automated traffic enforcement agreement with Global Traffic Group with the inclusion of a minimum of forty percent overt vehicle usage on an annual basis.
Okay. Thank you. Um, so that's the, the, uh, motion with the amendment that passed. Counsel Bressi?
Great. Thank you Mayor Given. I'm, uh, just a question counsel. I'm kind of hoping somebody could convince me one way or the other because I'm, I'm honestly having a lot of troubles with this in terms of, uh, coming to this meeting, I probably wouldn't have been voting in favor of this motion, but the two years terms gives me a lot of confidence. I think the other thing that gives me some confidence is in our committee of the whole, we ask staff to come back with, uh, with options to report fine revenues separate from, separate from departmental budgets. And if we did move forward with something like that, I think that would go a long way to inspiring public confidence. More importantly for me, we're going to be getting some options coming back from staff with abilities to resource photo radar more on the city side, which I think could provide some real opportunities to make better safety outcomes out of it. But I'm just trying to get a sense of council of where you folks are at in terms of if this motion passes, is council the place where we're going, all right, we've made the touches we want to make? And now when this two-year term's over, next council, take the ball and run with it? Or are people at the place where this is going to be an iterative process for the next little while as we figure this out? And I'm just trying to get a sense of where council's at to decide how I'm going to vote. And then if people want to give me a sense of where you vote, but just right now I'm a no. But I'm open to be convinced I'm a yes if I'm getting a sense that we're not just leaving us for the next two years.
So to be clear, the, uh, motion to amend to just a two-year term did not pass? And so it currently is under the three-year, uh, term. Um, so that was a five-four on that one.
Sorry, that, that's what I meant. I meant to say it would have been easy for me to vote if that had gone, but-
Okay.
Sorry, I've got the spin behind me.
Yeah. No problem, no problem. Okay. So, uh, open for discussion, debate on the main motion. Um, and Counsel Bressi has sort of put his, uh, his marker out there to say, try and- Counsel Blackburn and then Counsel Friesen?
Thank you, uh, Mayor Given. Um, it's, it's funny that you asked for that, uh, Counsel Bressi because I was thinking that I wanted to say something to you about it anyway. Um, you know, we've given this a lot of, of consideration and some valuable debate. Uh, the decisions, uh, regarding the elements that we wanted to give to administration have been, uh, finally decided for the time being. And- uh, finally decided for the time being. And, uh, so now the point is whether or not we're asking, uh, administration to, uh, conclude a contract renewal with Global or not. And I would, I would encourage everybody to ask administration to go ahead and conclude the negotiations. I think that we all, despite some of the details that we don't like, uh, we all want there to be, uh, an agreement with, uh, Global and have them continue. So voting against this really defeats, um, um, administration's, uh, purpose, and, and it also leaves us in the lurch in terms of, uh, what do we do instead? So I would encourage you to vote in favor, simply because we're, we're past the point of debating the, uh, details. Thank you.
Thanks, Counsel Blackburn. Uh, I think I have Counsel Freezin next, and I'll just say I'm getting a little bit intermittent, lagged time. So if I, if you're all trying to get my attention, just, and I miss you, it could be that.
Thank you, uh, Mayor Given. I will be voting in favor of continuing the contract. Um, not because I, you know, and, and it's, and it's not saying that I wholeheartedly think that, um, we're doing it really well, perfectly well, and the way we go. I do think this is something that, um, we've made some progression on to make it a better program, and we can continue to make progression on. I would really like to see, as we do so, I, I would like to see that, um, we consider having an, an in-house, um, an individual who really is focused on understanding the, um, you know, where it is best to, to deploy these vehicles, where we do get our best outcome, and we will continue to have improvements to this program. I don't think that this is, uh, uh, you know, reset it and, and leave it, not from my perspective at all. Um, it also really, you know, what, what we do know, let me remind you, Counsel Bressi, since the, what we do know is that the use of automated traffic enforcement improves outcomes, in, improves safety. Um, the, the research supports that. Our experience in Grand Prairie supports that to, and let's not throw the baby out with the bathwater. Let's not say, okay, because it isn't perfect, we're going to stop doing it. Let's continue it imperfect as it may be, and continue to work toward making it better. And, and as I said earlier, I'd really like the, the, um, discussion around this to move away from, um, it as an, an enforcement thing, or just simply as a, um, uh, you know, uh, the revenue consideration, and move toward what are the outcomes that we're after, worth, what, what value are they add to us? And then perhaps, what are we willing to, um, invest in that? And, and perhaps at that point, we can come to a different, um, funding model. But for now, let's go with what we've got. I, I don't think that, uh, um, necessarily the, the, uh, current funding or the current, um, payment schedule i- is a bad thing at all. Um, um, but if we, uh, put some more pointed attention to this in-house, I think we can vastly improve even what we're doing now. Uh, I think it would be a mistake to remove it. So I'll be voting in support of the continuance of the, of the, uh, contract.
Okay. Thanks, Counsel Freezin. I think I saw Counsel O'Toole.
Yes. Thank you, Mayor Given. I just want to clarify a few things. Uh, Mr. Bressi, you wanted some clarification and trying to convince you, uh, you got on council and you wanted to address this photo radar at one time. Uh, we've waited till the end of the contract, and we've done that. Have we made some changes? Yes, we have. Is it beneficial to the community? Yes, it is. And, uh, with all that said and done, you did have an opportunity to suggest some, some changes, which, uh, you have done. In the end, uh, we, sometimes in negotiations, we never get exactly what we want. We don't get a hundred percent, but sometimes enough is enough to convince you. And I think that we did a, a big challenge here, and we pulled off some good things. And when we had our council committee as a whole, we had the director of, uh, Global, uh, Services there, can't remember the full name, but at this time, but he was very easily, uh, motivated to work with the city, and if we needed to make some changes down the road, um, he was open to that. And, uh, I suspect that in the next three years, there will be some slight changes that we may want to make. And, uh, I think that, uh, that is good enough word, his word. Uh, there was a number of council members that was alive, uh, via Zoom, and, uh, he's committed to making sure the Grand Prairie is looked after, and, uh, he doesn't want to lose this contract either. So, um, I don't know what else to tell you, but I'm going to be supportive of the motion that's out there, and I would encourage you to make that motion, uh, as your vote. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Counsel O'Toole. Um, Counsel Thieson, were you in the queue? Yeah. Counsel Thieson, then Counsel Plott.
I think Counsel Plott and I put our hands up at the same time, so hope you don't mind, Wade. Uh, Counsel Bressi, I really appreciate and admire your persistence on this topic and your passion, uh, backing it up. Um, if I could convince you, uh, Counsel O'Toole already said, uh, you know, uh, Global Traffic Group is more than willing to negotiate the terms of service within the existing contract, and we've already seen that happen. Um, we have annual touchpoints on our stats and on the photo radar safety numbers, uh, every year. So, um, we have that. Um, personally, I don't think the system is predatory as it exists right now. Um, and I think it's also very helpful, um, that, uh, we've had many safety audits of our stop signs. I think that's a big anger point for a lot of our public when they, when they have that stop sign ticket for not coming to a complete stop. Um, we're, we're improving our intersection safety, and we're reducing, reducing the number of officers or Global Traffic Group people on sites. Also, um, we may be looking at this within the next six months anyways. Uh, the province is going through their own review, um, and if they make any significant changes, we are probably going to have to look at that, or administration's going to have, have to talk with Global Traffic Group, uh, to negotiate the new terms of what the province is handing down. So I'm not sure what that looks like. A bit nebulous as we await, uh, what the province's directive on, uh, traffic enforcement and, uh, photo vehicles. Uh, but, uh, if I've done anything, those are, those are my reasons why I'm going to support it, and I hope you can support it as well in knowing that we are going to have multiple opportunities to look at this and tweak it potentially as we move forward. So, uh, for all those reasons, I hope you join council and, uh, support the motion.
Thanks, Counsel Thieson. Uh, Counselor Plott, if you're there? Still didn't get it, Counsel Plott. Just gonna, yep.
I pushed the wrong button up there. Um, I, I'm, I'm really struggling with this one too with Counsel Bressi. I'm, I'm, I really do think that community safety has been better from, from this. But I do, I'm struggling because we lost the, the, the motion with the three-year term. I really think I'm struggling with this the most because we got the touches once in our term. For four years, we're going to touch it once, and now we're going to send the next council to touch it once. So I'm, I'm struggling supporting something that in nature I want to support, because I really do think we're making a mistake with having this as a three-year term. I, I lost that motion, I'm not going to die on it, but now because of that, I'm, I'm going to publicly say I can't support this motion because of the three-year term. I like the program. I think there's a reason Global's being really negotiable. I think we're looking at the fact that we just reduce the amount of things that they have to do, where revenue is probably not going to change because we're going to find the spots that work. Um, I think this is a good contract, and I really wish we were starting to have a conversation with how we could keep control of this and have this in-house, and look at that. And that hasn't been a conversation for us yet. So for me, I can't support it. I know, uh, administration said it's, it's not the best option, but we really haven't had a chance to have a good conversation with it. So, um, I can't support us going with three more years because I, I really think we haven't had enough chance to talk about this, uh, and kick it for three more years just isn't good enough for me. So can't support it.
Okay. Thanks, Counsel Plott. Counsel Clayton?
Thanks, Mayor Given. I encourage council and to remind you that the whole point of this is the community safety initiative. The automated photo radar is, has proven results to make our community safer, safer. It's reduced collisions at intersections and in turn saves lives. Less accidents means less, uh, less injury and more lives saved ultimately. To, to not support the initiative because of the fact that the term isn't what you want, I agree, it should have been a two-year term. But then just to not support the initiative, to kill the program, which has proven results, that's not a good decision in my opinion. You have to support the, the safety initiative of this. The whole point being, don't get me wrong, do I love paying photo radar tickets? No. Do I think that, you know, they're expensive? Yes. Do I think that at times, the contractor in the early days probably was a little bit predatory? Have they been adaptive and fixed, you know, the concerns that administration has had? Yes, absolutely. But the big overall picture is that this is community safety. And the end of the day, the next term, the next council, they want to get at it right away because the majority of council doesn't want to do it. They can direct administration to review the contract right away and get out of the contract sooner than later, if need be. But for now, for us, for this council, if you support community safety initiative, you need to support renewing this contract. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Counsel Clayton. Um, any other discussion or debate? Uh, I'll, I'll just, uh, take my stab, but you know, I'll say, uh, Counsel Bressi, the observation that I would make is the program from the start of this term to the end of this term, uh, sorry, the start of the program to now is substantially different. Um, and I think that that demonstrates that it is absolutely an iterative process based on results that we're seeing out in the field, changes in traffic patterns, and administration's engineering view. You know, uh, one thing that has been mentioned is that the program has actually changed because we changed our engineering, said, you know, there's some spots where, uh, we don't think we need stop signs anymore, so we're going to change that. Uh, we weren't handcuffed to keeping the stop signs so we could continue to write tickets. Uh, the program doesn't work like that. Administration had an observation that came out of the data in the course of the con, past contract, um, and they were able to act on that. I would imagine that, well, I wouldn't imagine, we will continue to act that way. Um, and, uh, we also had, uh, significant changes in the number of hours worked over the course of the previous contract. Uh, I think we have, uh, adequate flexibility for the three-year term. And as Counsel Clayton said, you know, at, at this stage, you know, council, there's nine of us. Uh, we don't, no one of us wins on every single decision. Um, it is about establishing a consensus position, which sometimes means that there are elements that you really, really like and some elements that you don't really like. I think we, uh, this council is absolutely, absolutely putting its stamp on the program. Um, when people start to see, uh, visible and explicitly marked vehicles around the community, they'll know that that was an, you know, explicit, uh, move by this council to address the community concern. And, uh, I think over the course of the next couple of years, we're going to see more administrative matters. I think having, uh, a short term where council is hands-in adjusting all of the dials does start to get to be in that, in that weeds sort of position. I think we've taken some high-level direction, uh, and that was appropriate, and giving that to administration. Um, I think everything we're doing now is, is reasonable. Um, to say that we need to be adjusting it more often, uh, to a greater level of detail starts to get a bit too administrative for me. Um, I think our council should have confidence that we're putting a good stamp on this program and that it is still open to evolution as we go forward. Um, was there anybody else, uh, in the queue that wanted to speak? Uh, Counsel Bressi, go ahead.
Great. Thank you, Mayor Given. Uh, yeah, sorry, I don't think I've been, I've been convinced that we've put enough of that stamp on to support, support this motion. Something I wanted to be really clear is pushing back against saying, if, if this motion works fail, I've read in the room, I don't think it's going to fail, but I hope it, I hope it does. And if it does fail, I don't think that means that ATE's over in here. I don't, I'm not hearing from anybody that the will is, including those of us who are likely to vote no, that photo radar shouldn't have a, have a room in here. If this motion fails, that doesn't mean the program's over. That means council needs to figure out how to pass a motion that's amenable to council that would still enable it. And I can think of a few different options to do that. So voting no does not mean that we're saying cancel the contract. It does not mean that we're saying get rid of photo radar. That doesn't have to be the result if this motion fails. And so I think I'm still not convinced, and it's not because I don't think that ATE shouldn't have a role in our community.
Thanks, Counsel Bressi. Um, I don't see anybody else in the queue, so we'll call for the vote on the main motion as amended. Uh, all those in favor? Okay, I see, uh, seven and opposed. I see two opposed. Okay, so that motion does carry. Um, and that takes us on in our agenda now into, uh, committee business. Uh, and we start off with, uh, item eight point one, council committee as a whole. Counsel Thieson, did I see your hand on that one?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor Given. I would move that council adopt the minutes of the council committee, the whole meeting held Monday, May fourth, 2020, as presented.
Okay. Thanks, Counsel Thieson. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Are there any errors that we need to correct before we officially adopt them? Seeing no one raise their hand, uh, I'll just, uh, confirm, uh, it looks like Counsel Bressi may have had to step away, so we, we won't be recording his vote on this one. Uh, call for the vote to adopt those minutes. All in favor? Okay, that's eight. Thank you. Um, and Counsel Bressi is away at the moment. Uh, so we'll move on to, uh, the community services committee. Uh, Counsel Freezin, is that your set of minutes?
Yes, it is. Uh, thank you, Mayor Given. So I would like to move that, uh, council adopt the minutes of the community services committee meeting held Tuesday, May twelfth, 2020.
Thanks, Counsel Freezin. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. All in favor? Thank you. Uh, Counsel Bressi, we're just voting on the minutes from, uh, community services. Were you there for that? I'll just make sure.
Yeah, I was, but I didn't hear the discussion. So could I be marked as absent maybe for this?
Okay. Heck, yeah, we'll just have you marked as absent. And then, so, um, I think that that was unanimous to adopt that set of minutes, other than Counsel Bressi, who was absent still for that one. Thank you. Um, Counsel Freezin, anything you wanted to highlight from that set of minutes?
Um, yeah, I think, um, the, uh, the South Beach Archives, um, it has been looking for a little while now for a place to, uh, to relocate to as they're, you know, right now they're tight for space and also on a flood, which is of course a considerable concern for Archives. So, um, the, they, they had potentially a, a different location that would require a build, and while committee was not, um, necessarily on board with that, we did move and carry the motion that, um, they have a look at moving over to Center Two Thousand. So that, um, is going to be looked at. And then, uh, we also had, uh, sorry about that, my, uh, um, we also had, um, Ms. Ridgeway from, uh, Revolution Place present us with a, um, an overall vision of what Revolution Place may look like going forward, um, allowing it for some market advantage, uh, and, as well as just, um, some logistical improvements in how people move about the building and that sort of thing. So we had a listen to that, and, um, and we'll see later that we brought some of that forward into our capital, uh, request, our capital, um, expenditures that, uh, we're going to look at for this year. So those are the big things. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Counsel Freezin. Uh, we'll move on to the infrastructure and economic development committee. Uh, Counsel Bressi?
Great. Thank you, Mayor Given. I'd move that council adopt the minutes of the infrastructure and economic development committee meeting held Tuesday, May twelfth, 2020, as presented.
Thanks, Counsel Bressi. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote to adopt that set of minutes. Uh, all in favor? Thank you. And Counsel Minhaas, I'm not sure if you can hear us there. We're just calling for the vote on the infrastructure and economic. Thank you. Uh, so that's unanimous. Thank you. Um, Counsel Bressi, uh, anything to highlight?
Yeah, I don't have any business arising out of it, but a few highlights for council to hear was from our director's service update. We had some transportation updates. Uh, two things the public will be interested to know is, one, there's work on a wayfinding project throughout Musk City Park, so putting up better signage to help people find their way around some of the great nature we have in the middle of our city. And if people are wondering what the little white stakes of the park are, as I've had a few ask me, that's what that is. Uh, and also asphalt plants have opened up. So now that we can get, now that we actually can buy asphalt, that means that our road projects really get to start going at full steam ahead. And so I know a lot of people are going to be excited for that. And one of particular note is the old bypass from Staples Intersection to North City Limits is going to get some very substantial work done now that the, this is the first construction season the city's ever owned that bypass. So I know that our director and all of council is very excited to get substantial work done on that road. Um, two pieces of committee discussion to highlight was- Um, two pieces of committee discussion to highlight was we had the administration come back with a report on, that was brought to us about traffic on 110th Avenue and 102 Street. And we had some really great data from our engineering department showing that overall it is a very safe special road for kids getting school, but there still seems to be a disconnect with a few kids jaywalking in the area and definitely the community not feeling that it's safe. And so administration was directed to go have further conversations with the school about how we can maybe address some concerns and come back. And then the last one is talking about secondary suites. The decision was made to set up a conversation between council and industry to talk about the regulations of, around secondary suites and whether or not they are, it's a good time to reform them and if there's changes that need to be made. So I know that'll be an interesting conversation, it'll be of high interest to some in our community.
Great, thanks, Council Bressi. Uh, that'll take us to Corporate Services Committee meeting. Uh, I think Council Minhaas, that's your set of minutes.
Thank you, Mayor Well Given. I move, uh, council adopt the minutes of the Corporate Society Committee meeting held on Tuesday, May 12th, 22 as presented.
Okay, thanks very much, Council Minhaas. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote, all in favor? Thank you, that's unanimous. Council Minhaas, go ahead.
Yeah, OPD crisis, uh, chin, that's eight point, four point one. The recommendation is council approve the city particulates as a representation of the plant film of corporate crisis class action lawsuit initiated, uh, by the guardian law.
Thanks, Council Minhaas. Um, discussion and debate on the motion? I don't see anybody, uh, raising their hand, ringing in, uh, so I'll call for the vote, all in favor? Thank you, that motion carries. Council Minhaas?
Oh, eight point, four point two by law C twenty, uh, fourteen twenty-one, special regulation services tax levy in Pinnacle Ridge. Speaking that recommended council gave the first reading to by law C fourteen twenty-one being the special regulation service tax levy in Pinnacle Ridge by law.
Okay, thanks very much. So a motion for first reading, uh, no discussion or debate on first reading. I'll call for the vote, all in favor? Thank you, that motion carries. Go ahead, Council Minhaas.
Give the second reading to by law C fourteen twenty-one.
Okay, thanks very much, Council Minhaas. Uh, motion for second reading, which is open for discussion and debate. Is there anyone, uh, for discussion or debate on this motion? Seeing none, I just observed that this is a piece of business that we've done for many years in a row now, and it is a special, uh, levy to pay for the cost of operating the fountain in the Pinnacle Ridge neighborhood. Um, I will call for the vote on second reading, all in favor? Thank you, that motion carries. Go ahead, Council Minhaas.
The third reading of by law C fourteen twenty-one at the meeting this time.
Okay, thanks very much, Council Minhaas. But so this is a motion to have third and final reading here at this meeting. Uh, in order for us to move on to that third and final reading, this motion must pass unanimously. Is there any discussion or debate as to merits of having third and final reading? Seeing none, then I will call for the vote. Please vote, are all in favor, sorry? That motion is unanimous, thank you. We can have third and final reading, Council Minhaas.
Uh, I ask council to give the third reading to by law C twenty four, um, fourteen twenty-one being a special declaration service tax levy in the Pinnacle Ridge by law.
Okay, thanks very much, Council Minhaas. Any discussion or debate on third and final reading? Seeing none, then I will call for the vote, all in favor? Thank you, that motion passes unanimously. Um, and I think that handles all the business out of that committee meeting. Council Minhaas, was there anything else you wanted to highlight?
Yeah, I'd like to say a couple of things. Uh, assessment interaction due to COVID assessment appeal board, appeal data has been extended to until July 1st. There have been forty non-residential appeals received as so far. Whether drawn on the tips as the program have been slowed. The finance administration is working to planning 2021 budget. The line of credit is now placed, the, the city not had used this yet. Administration planning, plan to present the information to reserve specie by end of June. And GIC and IT transit onboard security camera project has been scheduled to start this week. The traffic count this month is almost completed. To show the traffic count data in the city, the B inspection app should be operational next week for the field reporting, that's my, thank you.
Great, thanks, Council Minhaas. So that'll take us to item eight point six, council committee of the whole meeting from May 12th. Uh, I'll look for a motion for that set of minutes. Council O'Toole.
Uh, boy. Thank you very much, Mayor Given. I move the council committee of the whole meeting, uh, on Tuesday, May 12th, 2020. Uh, the council adopt the minutes of this meeting and, uh, as presented.
Okay, thanks very much, Council O'Toole. Any discussion or debate on the motion for that set of minutes? Uh, Ms. Karbushuski?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I believe we missed item eight point five, the Protective and Social Services Committee meeting minutes.
Thank you for that catch, thank you. Um, sorry, we'll come back to you, Council O'Toole. My apologies, uh, we'll go back to the Protective and Social Services Committee meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for that catch. Uh, so if we can have, uh, motion for that set of minutes. Council Plot, sorry, my apologies.
Thanks, Mayor Given. I thought we were just trying to even out mic time and I need to take my, more than my share, so I thought we were just bumping over these, that's right. Um, anyways, I just make the motion that council adopt, uh, the Protective and Social Services Committee meeting held Tuesday, May 12th, 2020 as presented.
Thanks, Council Plot. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote, all in favor? Uh, Council Clayton with you back, okay, there you go, thank you, we got you. Uh, that motion carries with one silhouette. Uh, Council Plot, anything else you wanted to highlight in that set of minutes?
You bet, thanks, Mayor Given. Uh, we had a director service verbal update, a couple of things to highlight where our community social development group is still continuing on with their virtual conversations with the nonprofits. They had already over, almost forty people attend here last week, so good job to Tammy, not fun to, uh, do a Zoom meeting with forty people and she did a great job of it. Um, our community safety initiatives were discussed and looked at and brought, brought forward and we'll be going into implementation. So the mobile outreach program that we discussed, the crime mitigation, uh, grants that were discussed, so that was, that was good as well. And enforcement services also has the new online pro, licensing program, uh, for the pets has been extremely, uh, successful. So those are the highlights from the minute.
Okay, thanks, Council Plot. Okay, uh, then Councilor, uh, O'Toole, my apologies, we'll come back to you, uh, now, uh, for your motion on eight point six.
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. I move the council adopt the minutes of the council committee of the whole meeting held Tuesday, May 12th, 2020 as presented.
Thanks very much, Council O'Toole. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes on the second time around? Seeing, seeing none, then I'll call for the vote, all in favor? Thank you, that motion carries unanimously. Uh, go ahead, Council O'Toole.
Uh, we had one motion that, uh, uh, that came out, and, uh, that is by law C fourteen twenty, property tax by law. And I move that council gives the first reading into by, uh, by law C fourteen twenty, being the twenty twenty property tax by law.
Thanks very much, Council O'Toole. So a motion for first reading, obviously no discussion or debate. I'll call for the vote, all in favor? Thank you, that motion carries, the first reading carries unanimously, Council O'Toole.
I move that, uh, we give second reading to by law C dash fourteen twenty.
Thanks, Council O'Toole. Any discussion or debate on second reading of by law C fourteen twenty? Councilor Bressi?
Great, th- thank you, Mayor Given. My intent is not to rehash all the debates we had at committee of the whole, but I think it's fair enough after a week as we've had, got to have second thought as it comes to council itself to reconsider the most important ones. And for me, I'm still really bothered by this rebate, so I'd like to move that council amend the motion by directing administration to strike the rebate from this property tax by law and to, uh, add that, add the money that would have been spent to it to the council economic recovery fund.
Okay, um, I will just clarify with the director of corporate services if that motion is clear, um, or if we need to, yeah, there's sort of two parts there. Um, Shane, do you have any comment on, on the clarity of the motion and ability, administration's ability to enact it? I'm wondering maybe if it should be two separate motions?
Yeah, uh, thank, thank you, Mayor Given. Uh, the, the clear, I, it's clear what the intent of the motion is. I am just, uh, having a quick review here of the bylaw as we had, uh, we had actually, we'd done it in two parts. There was, uh, we were levying one point two five percent in one bylaw, and we were giving the rebate provisions in another. And so I'm just, um, want to make sure, uh, that we haven't, uh, this is the appropriate place for, for that, uh, change. I'm just giving it a quick read here.
Okay, so yeah, we'll just pause, uh, for, um, sort of an administrative review and, uh, ruling on that, just to make sure that, um, council members can obviously make their motions. Um, we just want them made in the right place, um, so that we don't end up having to come back. Uh, particularly, uh, observing that this is, uh, there is some time limits on, uh, council's ability to turn this around. Administration, uh, has legislated to get some of these, uh, things out the door.
Uh, this would be the appropriate place, um, to make that, uh, to make that change.
Okay, so Council Bressi, um, you know, I'm gonna ask you to, uh, I think, so I, so we're, you're basically amending second reading. You have a second portion, uh, uh, that, that sort of is based on the outcome of the first. My suggestion is that we have to deal with the first because we're, we're amending a bylaw. I don't think you can have two things embedded in, in amending a bylaw. Um, I appreciate the reason that you did that is so that people can know what happens if you, uh, if that passes. And so, uh, I'm just gonna ask you to, to do the amendment first. Explain your reasoning and what you would do after if the amendment to the bylaw passes.
Sure, I'm happy to do that. So yeah, I'll just say to strike that, to strike the one point two five percent rebate from this bylaw would be my amendment. And then my intention would be if that does pass, when we're done dealing with this bylaw, to ask councils to put that money in the economic recovery fund. And I really think, listening to council, the idea of this one point two five percent rebate is, is economic recovery, just the way that we're going right now, the way that council's thinking the best way to trigger recovery is by giving people a little bit of extra money in their pockets right now. And I disagree with that for two reasons. Uh, one is that I just don't think it substantially helps a lot of families, a lot of businesses. As we've talked about before, forty bucks or a, for a family or a couple hundred bucks for a business doesn't substantially move the needle. And I think the one argument that is good behind, behind doing this, that really does have potential to make impact in our economy is it's one point five million dollars that's into the, into the economy that's not taken by the city. And that was gonna get me supporting this, and then I started thinking about it over the weekend, and I started thinking, well, wait a minute, a lot of our very largest property owners aren't actually based in Grand Prairie, and us regiving them their tax bills isn't actually feeding into the Grand Prairie economy. It's feeding into the economy of head office or wherever it is, it's money being taken out of our local economy. So this rebate for me, I think, is largely a symbolic thing that doesn't actually substantially move the needle in our community. I do think that if we want to put, put about a million and a half dollars towards economic recovery though, if it was targeted to local initiatives, where it could go to the businesses and families that are actually struggling, it really could substantially move the needle. So for, for me, it's, I really think we should be having either a zero percent increase or we should be having a one, two point two five percent increase with that going to target support. For me, this is a tax increase with the appearance of giving it back to, with, giving it back to people with the appearance of we're, that we're, we're feeling good about it, but I don't think it actually substantially moves the needle, this rebate. So I'd encourage council not to support this rebate.
Okay, thanks very much, Council Bressi, I, I see you. And just to be clear, your motion, um, would be to amend the bylaw to maintain the one point two five percent increase?
Yeah, and I think it, uh,
And follow up would be what to do with that additional funds, yeah?
Yeah, I think for me, I'd still, I'd probably be more comfortable with zero percent, but I think that that's very clear to me that council, I don't think that's one I'm gonna win, but I, but this is one that I think I might have a chance floating by council.
Okay, thanks, Council Bressi. Okay, so I did see some hands, I'm sorry, I didn't get, uh, the order. I think I saw Council Clayton and Council Blackburn.
Thanks, Mayor Given. Um, I can, uh, appreciate your method and your thought, uh, Council Bressi. I guess my concern is, is that, I don't know when, because all these Zoom meetings are starting to meld into one, but in a recent Zoom meeting, we had a discussion that administration supported that we could get to a zero percent. So by, by taking your money and putting it into an economic recovery plan, which I completely support, is still taking money. And so at some point, when we said to administration, can we get there? And they said, yes, and we worked this out, we should have held it to there. Now by putting it to one point two five, regardless of where you're putting this money, which I appreciate the cause, is still taking money. So I really struggle with supporting your amendment, but I totally support the initiative. Um, so I'm not really sure where I'm gonna end up on this one, thanks.
Okay, thanks, Council Clayton, Council Blackburn, then Council Plot.
Thank you, Mayor Given. Um, I, I don't agree that giving back the one point two five percent is symbolic or something that's supposed to help folks deal with the current economy. Um, I do agree that, that if we can effectively give people a zero percent increase this year, then that, that is a gesture towards, uh, understanding what people are going through, um, during the COVID crisis. However, the whole purpose of giving the one point two five percent back to people rather than setting the, um, um, rather than setting the, uh, tax increase at zero percent is because we need to, we need to protect, um, what our revenues are going to look like and what our tax increase might have to be in 2021 if, if we're starting from, uh, a lower base than, um, uh, than we originally had intended. I don't want to see our budget cut to, uh, to the point where there is a zero increase that we have to recover from, uh, in 2021. I think it's really important that if we're going to provide a zero increase to folks for a financial reason, that we put the one point two five percent at least in the budget so that we're, uh, uh, we're in a better standing for the beginning of next year. Thank you.
Thanks, Council Blackburn. I have Council Plot, then Council Minhaas, then Council Freezin.
Thanks, Mayor Given. Um, I'm kind of with Council Clayton, I'm still wishing we were talking about a zero percent, not this, but if we're gonna talk about the one point two five, I will fully support this motion. Um, I just, I, I think it would almost be counterintuitive to the city to, to just give this money back in a lot of ways. We're constantly, we, otherwise I wonder why we have things like arts development and community respending and some of these things that we say we want to let, uh, small scale tour, or the small scale tourism events, large scale. We say that we want to do these things because we want to leverage money. And by just giving money back, we didn't leverage a single thing. If we put this into a fund and we actually put it towards facade improvement grants, where they have to do matching amounts of money, we help nonprofits to can show us how they're matching grants. We, we have all kinds of purpose for this money to help recover, that we can leverage it. And we're not gonna leverage it by just giving it back to people. Sure, I'd love to have it back for businesses and myself, but I'd rather see it come back in a way that's gonna help our businesses come out of this more successful and have better recovery for commercial and industrial and office space. So I think this is a great motion, I'd be fully supportive of it, um, because I think this puts a million and a half dollars in a fund that if we don't use it, council, and we don't see the full crisis, we can always put it back in reserves or have it used towards 2021 or future years tax, tax amount. So this could end up being a rebate at some other point. It's just, this could be kicked down to twenty-one or twenty-two where we say, hey, guys, we didn't need a whole million and a half dollars, so let's put a half million dollars back in the budget to help the tax, uh, incentive or tax increase for that year. So I hope we support this, and I think it's a better use of the money as a whole.
Okay, thanks, Council Plot. Uh, Council Minhaas, then Council Freezin.
Thank you, well, Mayor Given. I will not support this amendment. There's a reason, we talked a lot of last week on this issue, and then they'll become up with it to rebate. I don't personally like the rebate, we should not cut it off, but this year is a COVID, uh, COVID year nineteen, whatever, is we try to help the people. It's a little bit, a lot helps for some people, maybe not for a lot to help for others, but there's a money goes back to the people, they will spend it somewhere here that'll be benefit to economy. So I, I'll go the regional, uh, uh, motion, but not to support that amendment.
Okay, thank you, Council Minhaas, Council Freezin?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Um, thank you, Council Bressi, for bringing this back to the table. We did have a lot of discussion at the committee of the whole, and I'm, I'm very, I'm completely in favor of this. That was my preference. And I'm, I'm very, I'm completely in favor of this. That was my preference then, and it is still my preference. Uh, people, there, there may be some people who will very much appreciate that thirty or forty dollars back. But there are very many more who, um, it, it really doesn't do a ton for their household to have an extra thirty or forty dollars o- over the course of a year. Um, this is, this is where the, the whole is greater than the sum of the parts. And if we can use that, um, whole and leverage it for economic recovery in our community, I think we'll be far better off next year than, uh, than giving it, um, as a rebate to each individual taxpayer. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Council Friesen. Uh, I think it's our Council Thiesen, then Council O'Toole.
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. Uh, thanks for bringing this up, uh, again, Council Bressi. Uh, I know it was on the fence, uh, last time, and I know I was leaning towards, uh, the one point two five thrown in the bucket. Um, you may have won me over with your, your observation, your keen observation on, uh, on our large property tax owners not living in the community thereby. We're gonna lose a lot of that money. Um, I said last week during our council committee of the whole, I really think this is a debate between Ralph Buck's and recovery dollars. Um, and, uh, we all know where Ralph Buck's went, and twenty years later, uh, our province was hitting a recession going, wow, we really could have used that money then. Uh, and I think we can apply it now. And I think, uh, you may have found a method that, uh, that, uh, can have me swap my vote because I know I voted in favor down the other side. So, um, my only fear in this, in supporting this motion is that we could fall back down to a zero, when I really feel like that one and a half million dollars that's represented by that one point two five can go a very long way without us having to tap into our reserves. Uh, and as Council Friesen said, the, the whole is greater than the parts. So, um, I'm, I'm very strongly leaning towards supporting this, Council Bressi.
Okay, thanks, Council Thiesen. Council O'Toole?
Yeah, thank you very much, Mayor Given. Uh, I'm not in support of this. I think, uh, we spent, I think, what is it, nine hours in meetings that day, and we talked a lot about this. There were lots of discussion. And, uh, the vote in that time was to go with what we have on the floor right now. And, uh, for you to come in and change, I understand, that's an option that you have. But, uh, it, uh, I think in, in the end, it would be beneficial to the residents at this time with the original motion, not with the amendment. Uh, when you talk about big companies, they support the little guys and the employees, our residents of Grand Prairie. Uh, and they do support all of the, uh, the sporting events. Uh, you go to the major, uh, major companies, they're the ones that support, uh, the sports and, uh, the Brownies and, uh, all the other, uh, groups that, uh, the citizens of Grand Prairie belong to. And so, um, I think that would be a, a benefit there. So I don't take your, uh, your statement as, uh, is, I take it very weakly. I think when you look at big business, doesn't matter what size, when you're trying to host an event, you look for support, and that's where you go to. And if we can supply, uh, a tax break to those big businesses, then that's an opportunity to support all businesses as residents as well. So I'm still gonna go and not support your, uh, amendment, and I would support the original motion as it is. Thank you.
Thanks, Council O'Toole. Um, I think that's just about everybody. I haven't said anything yet. Before we go to Council Bressi to close, you know, um, sorry, Council Clayton, was that where you wanted to get in? Okay, um, so we'll go to, uh, I'll just jump in, then Council Clayton, then Council Bressi to close on his amendment. Um, I'll say that, um, I won't support the amendment. I appreciate the intent. And if council, uh, you know, later chose, um, uh, to, um, increase any of these other programs or have special funding for recovery, um, I, you know, we do have reserves. They're not large. Um, they, they are not large, to be very, very clear. Um, but if there was ever a time, I suggest that now is the time where council may want to have some targeted programs coming out of that. And it would be appropriate to, in my mind, for me, to use reserves. Um, I also think now is not the time to be increasing people's property taxes. Um, I think that the motion, the, uh, bylaw as structured, um, is, uh, allows us to do both those things. Um, I think that we should, uh, consider this, uh, uh, rebate as a way to support. Um, it, it is not targeted. It's true. Uh, we, there's no means test to see whether you are directly impacted or not. Uh, this basically says we're going to leave that extra one point five million dollars out in the community. And the majority of it will be to commercial, uh, you know, uh, sorry, a significant amount will be to larger properties. And larger properties will have a larger benefit from it. Um, so, uh, I support the bylaw as originally proposed here. Um, I would further support the concept that Council Bressi is, is proposing with the second part to say council should set aside some money to have, uh, a, you know, a COVID, COVID economic recovery pot of money. I think that's a reasonable thing to do. I think we should have a discussion, independent of the tax rate bylaw, of how to do that. Um, so I won't support the amendment to the bylaw. Um, I would be happy for council to have a discussion about how much money we should set aside for programs targeted at helping our cu- community recover from, uh, you know, this unusual economic time. Um, and I think an appropriate place to fund that, uh, would be out of, uh, reserves or any provincial, federal support that we receive, recognizing that municipalities have pretty limited funds. Um, so, uh, won't support the first part of the motion. Uh, would encourage council to have a discussion about the second part, um, at a later date. Councilor Clayton, then Council Bressi to close.
Thanks, Mayor Given. I, um, really enjoyed the conversation we had here and appreciate Council Friesen's comments about the, you know, the, the sum of everything and what that potentially is impact. But, uh, a little bit along the lines of echoing Mayor Given's comments, I believe that making an economic recovery plan is something that we should do, um, uh, very soon, but, uh, out of a different pot of money. I, I won't support the motion only because I don't support an increase at all, at all. So one point two five, regardless if it goes to economic stimulus or regardless if it goes to rebate, I, uh, I don't, uh, support an increase at all. So therefore, I can't support this motion. Thanks.
Okay, uh, we'll go to Council Bressi to close.
Great, thank you. I, um, a couple thoughts. Is one, just there were a couple, a couple thinking, well, we decided this last week, so we should just go with the decision we made. And I'd just point out that there was a reason we had that discussion at the council committee of the whole instead of having it straight at council was so that we can go and consider the arguments and consider what's best for our community, come back and have that second thought. So I'd really encourage ca- council not to feel like because we committed this course last week, we're stuck, we're stuck on it. Please have an open mind as you're thinking about this. And also in terms of supporting big businesses, my intent of saying, hey, they've got a head office somewhere else. Money's leaving the community, isn't to say those businesses aren't worthy of support. Some of our very large businesses that are, that are headquartered elsewhere are still very low, very, have local staff, local management, and they invest in our community locally. And I think they're very worthy of support and how we can help them be viable in our community in the long term. I still think this rebate helps any of those businesses at all. I think what really does help those businesses is keep it, businesses in terms of their local franchises is having an extra one point five million dollars circulated in our local economy. And when we're sending, when we're sending mu- a bunch of money outside of our city, we're not accomplishing that. And I'd love to find a way for businesses, whether they're big or small, if they're suffering from COVID nineteen, let's have more money set aside to help them rather than giving them a small increase that does, a small help that doesn't actually substantially move the needle for them. So I hope council supports this amendment.
Okay, thanks for that close, Council Bressi. So we're on, uh, Council Bressi's amendment to second reading. Um, and to be clear, the, the idea that he shared about what to do, uh, if this amendment passes is not a part of the motion. It's there for information for council to know. But his amendment is basically to, uh, to strike the rebate portion, uh, to maintain the tax increase at one point two five percent with no rebate, just, just for clarity's sake, okay? So we all know what we're voting on. Um, so I will call for the vote. Uh, all those in favor of Council Bressi's amendment? I see four, and opposed? I see, uh, the other, uh, five. I can add up to nine. Okay. Okay, that motion does not carry, uh, on second reading. Uh, so we'll go back to, uh, second reading, uh, without the amendment. Um, do we need to have another round of discussion, debate on second reading? Uh, Council Plott?
Thanks, Mayor. And so I know we're coming up to it earlier, and I was just trying to zoom through it. But, um, can we just, can I just give a reminder from administration how much we have unallocated for the capital tax that we approved, that we may be approving later today? Um, I wanted to skim through it. It was around seven hundred and sixty thousand dollars, but I just.
Director Bork? I think you just muted, though, uh, Director Bork. I'm just pulling up that number, but that is the, uh, the, the range. Uh, seven hundred and ninety-one thousand. Thank you. There you go, Council Plott.
Thanks for that. And I guess the reason I'm asking that, I know we're, it's, dude, all these motions are, they're not tied together, but they are. But, you know, there's almost eight hundred thousand dollars that we're, we have unallocated in our capital tax. And we chatted about that last week as well. And I know there's another council that's, you know, was gonna come up and, and was gonna chat about that, uh, capital tax specifically because it was bothering them. But I think, uh, what I'm worried about is we're, if we don't address this at budget, it gets pushed to there. There is seven hundred and ninety-one thousand dollars that, that we already have that we don't have allocated. And so we're not far from a zero here, you guys. And that's where I'm struggling with what, like, supporters know this at all. You know, we're talking about rebate. We're going back and forth. I, I feel like it doesn't sound like a lot of us are really excited about the rebate. We're trying to find a way to do it. Um, I guess I'm gonna make a motion and, uh, an amendment that we just go to zero and we use the seven hundred and ninety-one thousand dollars that was unallocated in capital tax to go towards this. And now we're less than, I think that puts us at what? Uh, six hundred thousand dollars short, seven hundred thousand dollars short to, to do this, to have a zero percent rebate. It's a zero percent tax increase. Um, so I'm gonna go back and amend it the way I want to, uh, to have a zero percent tax increase, not the one point two five that's proposed, and no rebate, and use the unallocated capital tax of seven hundred and ninety-one thousand dollars to go against this.
Okay, um, so the, somewhat similar to Council Bressi's, uh, motion, uh, we're on second reading of a bylaw. Uh, the second reading of the bylaw, uh, the bylaw doesn't describe where the funds come from or where they would go to. Um, it is what the rebate is. And so Council Plott, um, I, I'll just check my thinking that, that, I think you need to make the first part of your motion to, you can, you know, it's zero percent. And then, you know, the, the intent of that, I think we would need to check with administration whether that, I'm not, I'm not one hundred percent sure that that translates exactly as, as you're intending it. So, so, uh, so Mr. Bork, can you just talk about the Council Plott's intention to use capital tax to cover some of the costs of going to zero percent? Um, that, uh, that would get us, uh, part of the way there, but that would be relying on us to just find the money, which, uh, as you know, has been, uh, something that, uh, we, uh, we've been committed, that there are pockets of money just lying around. We would have to come back with a proposal to either have service reductions or cuts to areas to fund that. Um, this wouldn't be a balanced budget that we were, that we were passing. And, um, we would have to do some further analysis if there were further things in, uh, council would like to cut from, from our budget. Okay, um, so, uh, so I think what I heard from administration was that, yes, it, mm, your, you know, proposal, your concept, uh, might get us part of the way there, but not all the way. And administration would actually have to reduce the budget to find the balance, uh, to meet the intent of the, uh, so if your zero percent passes, administration would be under the gun to find the things that, to, to, to fund off the rest of that.
Okay, I'll, I'll make the motion when we go to a zero percent and, and I get, uh, subsequent motion would come over that, um, realizing that we do have seven hundred and ninety-one thousand dollars that's unallocated right now.
Okay, okay, thanks very much. Uh, so open for discussion and debate, uh, I mean, and, uh, very similar as Council Bressi. So a motion to have zero percent, um, this was discussed before. And so hopefully we can be rather concise in our arguments, uh, have, in favor or against. Um, I, there were a couple, a number of people in the queue, Councilor Clayton, Councilor Bressi, Councilor Blackburn.
Thanks, Mayor Given. Um, I will support this amendment. Uh, I agree that, uh, you know, if, there's a couple sort of puzzle pieces that are coming after this that we can sort of, um, uh, potentially get some support to help, um, direct administration into the, into how we see this best, um, fitting. But, um, just the way that the agenda's set out, um, potentially if other things were first, it might have been a little easier. But, uh, regardless of that, I think that, uh, end of the day, zero percent is, is doable. Um, I think that there are other, um, items such as capital tax that we can talk about, uh, subsequently. Um, but however, for now, um, we've been told we can get to zero percent. Um, the community, um, is looking for direction in regards to no tax increases. And although that may be thirty to forty dollars per household, overall, as much as you'd look at an economic, uh, recovery plan, overall, that money at zero percent, um, to the community is like putting money in people's pockets. And that in turn is spending money in restaurants, it's spending money in retail, it's spending money. And if, you know, three hundred people go out and go shopping at the Prairie Mall, or two hundred people go out and go for dinner, and, and all that stuff adds up to a small business, and all that stuff adds up. So even though it may be thirty to forty dollars per household, when you have a community that all of a sudden has thirty to forty dollars per household, going out to spending that in our community, it does make an impact. Um, I encourage council to support this amendment. Uh, we've had discussions that we can be at zero percent, and this is not the time to be raising taxes. Zero percent is doable. We're not cutting any projects. We're not cutting any programming. We're not cutting, uh, major significant parts of our city by going to zero percent. And I encourage council to support it. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Council Clayton. I think I had Council Bressi next, then Council Blackburn.
Thank you. I'd just like to get some clarity and then I'll make my comments. But, uh, my understanding of this motion is it's just going to a zero percent. But is the intention also to strike the one point two five percent rebate or to go to zero? All right, good. Um, yeah, so then I'd, um, for, for me, I definitely do support this. And for me, it's very different saying we're having a zero percent tax rebate is very diff- or sorry, saying we're having a zero percent tax increase is very different to me than raising the taxes and giving it a rebate to look like we had a zero percent. I think it's different for two reasons. One, I think it's just more transparent and honest about what we're, what we're doing. It's not sneakily raising taxes so we can raise them next year by giving a rebate so it feels like we're not doing that. And I also think the difference is, yeah, thirty to forty dollars this year off a family, does that make a huge difference? I don't think it does. But if it's that thirty, forty dollars per year in perpetuity because we got taxes down and we kept them there, then all of a sudden it does become significant. And for me, if we're gonna, if, if our policy is gonna be that we're not taking extra money out of people's pockets this year, let's just have a zero percent increase, and then there's that pressure on us to not just find a way to boot it up next year. Either it's good policy to set our taxes at zero percent, or it's not. And I think for me, I, I'd way more comfortable just being honest and being completely transparent about this is zero percent, and we've got pressure if we want to raise, if we want to take more than one percent out of your pockets next year, we've got a lot more pressure because of this motion passing.
Okay, thanks, Council Bressi. Um, I think I had Council Blackburn next, and then Council Thiesen.
Thank you. You know, when we started this discussion at, um, uh, count, uh, committee of the whole last week, the, the concept was that we could get by with a zero percent increase in what it is that our taxpayers are going to send to us, uh, for this year. And the, um, the concern that was expressed by administration and by some counselors was that if we set a zero increase for this year, then we are actually cutting the budget that was proposed, um, in, in November. And administration would have to make adjustments in order to be able to meet that zero, uh, percent. The compromise was that we would continue to have the one point two five percent increase that, excuse me, that, um, uh, was proposed in November. But that in order to be able to provide the zero that we think we can do for this year, then we would rebate it. But in the, in the long run, we would end up not having to adjust our budget from what it was, um, uh, from what was passed in November. Uh, I'm, I'm very much against the idea of going to a zero percent increase, uh, uh, to be dealt with in future years, simply because we can afford to do it this year. So I would really urge people to go ahead with the original concept, which was leave the tax increase at one and a quarter percent, but then not charge the folks for it this year, simply because we can afford to do that. Thank you.
Council Blackburn, I've got Council Thiesen, then Council- Counselor Blackburn, I've got Counselor Thieson, then Counselor Clayton.
Uh, thank you very much, Mayor Given, and, uh, uh, this is, this is my fear, I kinda hope the last one went through, uh, and then we could have been directing that 1.25. Um, I'm not opposed to the rebate, uh, concept of this, in fact, I really feel for, uh, our city manager and Director Bork, uh, having to ping pong, uh, this conversation over the last few weeks, uh, they're really tight on deadlines, and, uh, we keep moving the goalposts, and I don't know if I necessarily agree with that, and I totally empathize with their situation, and I know they're great, they're not gonna mention it and say, "Oh, this is driving me crazy," but it's driving me crazy, and part of the thing is, and I've heard this, um, we wanna be transparent and honest. We're at a public meeting, people, like, this is being covered by media, we're talking about a rebate, it will be reported on, uh, so at the end of the day, I don't know how more honest and transparent you can get, we're gonna write the rebate number on the bill, and it's gonna be there, we're not gonna have to adjust our tax rates, and this is just a battle to get zero, and I, I think that's irresponsible. I'd be more in line with the original motion that was defeated, where we have directed funds of that 1.25, not the Ralph bucks that are going out, but in light of that, I'm still okay with the Ralph bucks going out, and I think we'll have that educational component and that transparency and that honesty to our people. Uh, we're, we'll do the best that we can in order to get that message out, but I don't think we're deceiving them in any way, shape, or form. Also, for the zero, for the 0% people that are, are debating this on the other side, this rebate is still putting $30 to $40 into the pockets of the people, the taxpayers, who are gonna go out and stimulate our economy. Um, so, a rebate is the same as a 0% now, it just changes it for next year, and in fact, I think we're, I think we're making the administration's job a little bit more stressful than we need to, uh, and I would strongly, very strongly encourage council to support, um, the original motion, which is the rebate, the 1.25%, because otherwise, we're just talking around in circles, and I don't know if we're getting anything accomplished of what we want in the end, so, uh, I encourage everyone to support the original motion.
Okay, thanks, Counselor Thieson, um, I think I had, uh, Counselor Clayton.
Thanks, Mayor Given. Um, the, the part that's not, um, open and honest, in my opinion, Counselor Thieson, is the fact that we're gonna raise taxes to a turnaround to give them back to people. So, it's like going to buy a vehicle, and you, you know the best price is this, but they put it here so they can tell you they gave you $3,000 back, they never gave you $3,000 back, they just never gave you the best price to start with. End of the day, we can be at zero, we don't need to raise taxes to a turnaround and give them back to people. The end of the day, if we're at zero, they got the, they've got more money in their pocket anyways, it's the same thing. If you give somebody a check, or you don't charge them as much, it's the same thing, end of the day. I strongly encourage council to support the 0%. The piece being is that administration has worked hard to get there, but we started at 0%, and now we've gone to increasing taxes so we can turn around and give them back to people, and, and to me, um, there are other things, there are ways for us to get to that 1.25, or sorry, to get to that, uh, the recovery plan, we can talk about capital tax, we can talk about other dollars that we don't have to spend today, that we can in turn do a recovery plan out of, that we can return to use next year to safeguard ourselves about an increase. If we didn't spend all our capital tax, which is on the further, the, on the agenda coming up, we could put that in a, in a, in account and use it next year to safeguard having an increase. So there are opportunities for us to prevent that increase that Counselor Blackburn talks about, and I agree, I don't want an increase next year either, but we don't have to do that if we're wise with our money today. Thank you.
Thanks, Counselor Clayton, uh, Counselor Thieson, did I see your hand, and then we're gonna be getting close to the end of the, uh, discussion here, uh, we won't, don't wanna have, uh, everybody having four or five swings at this, um, two is probably maximum.
Uh, thank you very much, Mayor Given, uh, and thanks, uh, Counselor Clayton, I, I actually agree with you, we can, we can move things, uh, down into next year, perhaps from our capital tax, perhaps based off of the decisions of administration and council, but that's next year. Um, I, I'm still, I'm still struggling, and the reason why I'm struggling is largely because of what Director Burke said last week in our council committee of the whole, eventually, we're gonna have to raise the taxes to pay the bills. Um, we need to pass this property, uh, tax bylaw today in order to make their job easier and in order to uphold our decisions in the Municipal Government Act about, uh, giving proper notice about property taxes, and also setting that bylaw standard. Um, I, I, it's, it's very dangerous and very reckless to, to constantly like, uh, try to stay under inflation, uh, in our budget cycles, in fact, uh, the cost of, of purchasing things is only gonna go up, I believe, through this COVID crisis, so I don't know if I, I agree with the 0%, it makes it harder for us, and even especially harder for administration next year, um, to, uh, drop a, a budget that works, uh, that keeps us in line with, uh, the community we wanna build and grow, so, uh, for all those reasons, um, this is my final part of the debate, I just, uh, encourage council to support, uh, the original motion, thanks.
Okay, thanks, Counselor Thieson, um, I don't see anybody else in the queue, we'll come back to Counselor Plott to close if, uh, he wishes, I'll just say that I also won't be supporting the motion, uh, as I was at committee, um, I, I'm really concerned about going to a 0% in this year, knowing that it does have a direct impact on next year. If council wants to have a discussion about next year and what the appropriate level of city services are in 2021, then fine, um, absolutely, let's do that, uh, let's do that at budget, where we can see the full picture, where administration can inform us about what things we'd have to cut, reduce, defer, whatever else, um, and, and that's a reasonable place to do that, where we have that full information. Uh, at this time, the concept of the rebate leaves the money in people's pockets and in the, uh, pockets of property owners, um, that's the, the impact we want. If, if we wanna have a zero because we want the city to be smaller, and we want the municipal government to have less money, then, then that's, that's a position somebody could take, it wouldn't be one necessarily that I would have, but if that's the point, then that's what we should just say, is we want the city to be smaller, we want the city to have less money, and we will always say that. Fair enough, like, that's a, that's a legitimate point of view, um, it's not one that I share, I think we should say what are the services that our citizens want and need, um, and how should we find those services, and to what extent. I think we do that at budget time, um, and I think I would ask council to, to, uh, be ready to engage in that discussion, uh, in the fall budget, as we know what our community looks like coming out of COVID, uh, what supports the community will need, and what resources the city will have at that time. Uh, for today, the ability to basically, uh, deliver, um, an effective 0% increase, um, by leaving that money in people's households or in their business, um, is accomplished through the bylaw as it is, uh, no amendments required, um, and so, I, I won't be supporting the motion. Uh, Counselor Plott, to close?
Uh, thanks, Mayor Given, it was my intent to have a whole other dialogue, we did this last week, but it's similar to any committees, we, we have dialogue committees, we go away, we talk all of a quick with, with colleagues and peers and, and people that have poked us from what they've seen on the committees, so, um, I do wanna remind us that this, this rebate that we're doing changes nothing in 2020. Twenty, we, we all, I hope, understand that 2020 is not impacted whether we do zero or we do 1.25 in rebate, so this isn't a 2020 conversation, this is all about 2021, and I have to constantly, I feel like, remind us of the horror stories I hear every day from people that, that don't work in government agencies, and, and I, I said this word last, when we met last week, but I, I feel it even more that, I feel it's just the general arrogance of us to think that we have to raise our prices, we have to. I get calls every single day about people that are getting wage rollbacks, figuring out how to have their business survive and operate with less, and they still need more. If everybody else in this world is being tasked to do that, why are we arrogant or so naive to think that our city needs to automatically bake in a 1.25% inflation to next year's budget in May of this year? I'm looking forward to the budget debate this year, I always think it's a great time, it's one of my favorite times of the year, but this isn't budget time, this is about setting 2020's budget, not 2021's, this is about setting 2020's budget, and this, what we're talking about rebate, decline bucks, all this stuff, is irrelevant, it's zero or it's 1.25 and money back. We're actually creating more work, effort, and money probably for administration of doing this razzle-dazzle rope-a-dope of the whole rebate coming back, so, let's be honest about it, if, if, if this is a 2021 budget conversation, I missed that note, this is about 2020's budget, and this has zero impact on 2020's budget, so I really hope everybody understands that we're voting about 2020's budget right now, and I really urge you to support the zero, because we're supporting with the rebate either way, so, I urge you to support it, it's the right thing for the community.
Okay, thanks very much, Counselor Plott, for that close, uh, so I'll just make sure that I can see all the council members on the screen, everybody keeps moving around, uh, one, two, three, okay, I think that's everybody, uh, so I will call for the vote on Counselor Plott's amendment, uh, to amend the bylaw to have a 0% increase in 2020. Uh, all those in favor? Okay, uh, that is three, and all those opposed? Okay, that is the balance, that's the other six, that, that motion does not carry, so back to the, uh, second reading, um, as originally proposed, um, I'm not sure that we need to have any more discussion or debate on that, we've tried a couple of different alternate versions, uh, we've probably all made our points on that, is coun- are council comfortable if we can go on to moving, uh, on to voting on, on the meeting? Okay, um, then we'll go for the vote on second reading of bylaw C-14, uh, 1420, all those in favor? Okay, uh, thank you, that's six, and opposed? That's three opposed? Okay, that motion carries, Counselor Minhoss.
I think, uh, O'Toole was doing, oh wait, I'll do it again.
Sorry, my mistake, Counselor Minhoss, I, I was on that, uh, thing in last committee, it was Counselor O'Toole that had done the first couple of readings, my, my apologies, Counselor O'Toole.
Woo-hoo, I get more airtime, thank you. I move that, uh, council have third reading of bylaw C-1423 at this meeting.
Thank you, and I think that's 1420, though. Yes, I see the clerk nodding, that's bylaw C-1420. This is a motion to have third and final reading, uh, you guys have all heard the spiel often enough, uh, this time I will actually, uh, enter to say that I do have something as to the merits of having third and final reading. Uh, administration is under some timelines, uh, that are legislated, I would encourage council members, uh, the three of you, if you don't wish to support this bylaw, by all means do that on third and final reading, I'd encourage you to support unanimous, uh, passing, uh, so we can move to that, uh, so that we can hit those deadlines that are required, otherwise it puts us in a real challenging position, you can absolutely vote your conscience and vote your heart on that third and final reading, um, but I just would encourage council to allow us to get to that final reading tonight. Um, is there any other discussion or debate on the merits of having third and final reading? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote, please vote. Thank you, uh, that motion does carry unanimously, okay, thank you, um, Counselor O'Toole.
And Mayor Given, I apologize for giving the wrong, uh, tax bylaw, but, uh, my page rotated, but I move that we give third reading to bylaw C-1420, being the 2020 property tax bylaw.
Thanks very much, Counselor O'Toole, uh, any discussion or debate on third and final reading? Seeing, seeing none, then I'll call for vote, all those in favor? Thank you, and opposed? And three opposed, that motion does carry, um, and, uh, Counselor Clayton, you had something arising?
Mayor Given, can I ask that we have a 10-minute break? Because I know there's still a few things on the agenda that may take some, uh, a couple things there that may take a bit of discussion.
Sure, yeah, I, so we do have, uh, some public hearings scheduled, um, we have been at it for a while, how about we do, do that, take a, uh, 10-minute break, come back at, by my clock here in my house, uh, 5, uh, 5:57, uh, we'll come back, um, Counselor Bressi.
Yeah, is it possible and willing to make a motion if you want, but also to move 8.7 to after the public hearings, just so we're not making members of the public to wait through those next things?
Sure, yeah, you know what, that, that actually would work well, we can do both, we'll, we'll, uh, Counselor Bressi, go ahead and make a motion on that, and then after that motion, we'll take a break.
Great, so I would move the council, um, I'll be, this is the right motion, postpone item 8.7 until after, um, af- until after public hearings are concluded.
Yeah, I, I think that's great, um, and clear, and meaning 8.7, 8.71, and 8.72?
Yeah.
So those, those three items there until after public hearings, okay? Um, any discussion or debate on Counselor Bressi's motion? Seeing none, then I'll call for vote, all in favor? Thank you, that motion carries unanimously, um, and so we will take a 10-minute break, uh, let's, you know, let's call it 12 minutes, we'll come back at 6 o'clock, um, to pick up on the, uh, balance of our meeting, uh, so we can move on to those public delegations, okay, so we'll come back at 6 o'clock. And we're back with the May 19th Grand Prairie City Council meeting. After a bit of a brief break, we're ready to continue on with our agenda. At the break, Counselor Bressi, you've made a motion to postpone 8.7 to after our public delegations. That did leave a couple of agenda items before our scheduled recess. Thankfully, we had nothing under them, I think. There were no items of correspondence. Our delegation in the first half of the agenda was related to the item under automated traffic enforcement, and so I think that delegation presentation has been dealt with that way. There were no notices of motion. And I will just check with Administration if we have any scheduled delegation. So is there anybody that let us know that they wanted to present to Council on any matter other than those that are the subject of our two public hearings tonight? Ms. Kavaschewski?
Thank you, Mayor Given. At this time, we have no delegations for this portion of the meeting.
Okay, thank you. So that will let us move into item 14.1, Bylaw C-1260-120, rezoning from agricultural to rural industrial. I would call this public hearing to order and would look to Administration for an introduction.
Thank you, Mayor Given. Excuse my slides, so just to confirm, are you able to see my slides at the moment?
Yes.
Thanks. So the proposed amendment to land use bylaws to rezone subject property from agricultural to rural industrial. The location is on the western side of the city, just west of the airport, and just east of the new Highway 43 bypass. The surrounding area is primarily agricultural. There are some small residential pockets such as Hockey Stick Estates and the development just southwest of Hughes Lake. There's also some farmsteads and some smaller industrial operations in the area. The rural industrial use allows for a variety of industrial, commercial, and agricultural uses, similar to our general industrial district with a more rural standard. So the main difference from some of our other industrial districts is that it allows for rural development standards, notably the road cross-sections. The proposed location would be divided into three lots. The rezoning is for the three proposed lots that you can see in the red hatch on the images here. According to the municipal development plan, the area is designated for industrial in the long term. One of the questions related to the application is the actual size of the lot. So the municipal development plan allows for partial development of a quarter section prior to the approval of an outline plan within certain limits. So the proposed rezoning exceeds the maximum lot areas in those limits. However, it is under the total allowable area. So what I mean by that is the size of individual lots exceeds the maximum size that a, an individual lot could be. But when you combine the total area that would potentially be subdivided off, that is within the intended limit. So restricting the development of the quarter section to under 25% prior to an outline plan, and the intent there is simply to allow for orderly development and more detailed engineering work prior to extensive development in the area, but also to allow people to do partial development in order to fund that more extensive work. One of the requirements is also to provide a shadow plan that demonstrates the future viability of the development in terms of conforming to other plans. The subject sites are within the Hughes Lake Area Structure Plan. The Hughes Lake ASP also designates a site for future industrial development. And it also notes that Range Road 70, which goes along the eastern boundary of the site, will become an arterial road. You can notice the road network in the map of the Hughes Lake Area Structure Plan, and you'll see that reflected in the shadow plan here. So what they've provided us with is a shadow plan that demonstrates that the quarter section can further be developed later on with an outline plan that conforms to the road network concept and future land use concept of the Hughes Lake ASP. And so, in our opinion, the shadow plan satisfies that requirement. In terms of stakeholder engagement, the standard notification process was undertaken, so that involved posting several signs up on the roadways along the properties as well as sending letters to adjacent property owners and advertising in the local newspaper. And we received two calls from adjacent property owners. One noted objections to any industrial development in the area. Another noted concern about any potential oil and gas development in the area. And both commented on concerns about potential impacts on their property values. They were both owners of residential properties nearby. In terms of whether or not this site is suitable for industrial development, both the MDP and Hughes Lake Area Structure Plan both designated for future industrial. There's a well site currently on the quarter that limits some other forms of development. It is bounded by the highway bypass on the west. It is separated from residential by a future arterial road. And it is part of the area of land annexed by the city to address future industrial land needs. So in our opinion, it has been designated for industrial for a very long time, and it is most suitable to that use. So to summarize, the long-term plan for the area is industrial, and we deem that use to be appropriate in our opinion. Even though the proposed lot sizes exceed the maximum allowable lot sizes in the MDP, we feel that the total unproposal along with the shadow plan meet the intent of the MDP of not exceeding 25% of the quarter in this preliminary development, and that the shadow plan supports, that future development is still feasible on the quarter section. Based on this interpretation, Administration recommends that Council give all three readings to the proposed rezoning. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Mr. Deroche. Counsel, before we get into presentation submissions, are there any questions for Administration at this stage? Questions for Administration, Counselor Pieson?
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. Just a quick question, Reed, in the analysis, it says there's a well site on the quarter. Is this well site large enough to help handle the development? Or would they have to draw on some pipe and other, other stuff for underground infrastructure?
So through the merits, sorry for the ambiguity in my presentation. I'm referring to an oil and gas well site, not a water well. And so, part of this would likely require onsite servicing for this form of development.
Okay, thank you, actually, that's, that was my question, oil or water? But I, I went to water, thanks.
Okay, thanks, Counselor Pieson, Counselor O'Toole.
Yeah, thanks, Reed. Just a question, you said there was two residents that opposed any construction in the industrial area there. How many residents are within maybe a one-mile area of that particular site? Would you have a number close, doesn't have to be exact?
Mr. Deroche?
I'm sorry, Mayor Given, I'm not able to provide a number of the, number of residences within a given radius.
So let me just change that around. Are there other residents in the area within a mile of that site?
Mr. Deroche?
Thank you. So there are other residents within the vicinity. So in addition to the two property owners that called, they are in a subdivision of, I believe, six or seven residential parcels. And they're also several quarters away from another rural residential development known as Hockey Estates.
Okay, thank you, that's all I needed.
Okay, any other questions for Administration? I, I have one, Reed. Has the city ever approved rural industrial before? I'm trying to remember if we have any other rural industrial zoned properties in the city, or if this is a first.
I'm, I'm sorry, Mayor Given, I, it is a very rarely used district, so I'm not aware of any examples, but given that it exists in our bylaws, it's likely been applied.
Sure, so you're like me, you can't remember any, but you don't want to say that 100% right now.
Right, it was created at the very beginning of the contest.
Yeah, okay, I, I don't think we've used it before, but I, yeah, I'm with you there, okay? Any other questions for Administration at this stage? Counselor O'Toole?
Yes, just because we're live on TV, I guess. What kind of industry could be developed or could operate in that area?
Deroche?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So there's a broad range of potential uses, generally industrial, so things like a gas station or car wash, recreational vehicle storage, automotive and recreational vehicle sales, rental and services, extensive agricultural, things with outdoor storage, that you would typically expect in an industrial area. And then there are some other discretionary uses, so things like restaurants or a casino or a restaurant.
Are they intended to be, in terms of utilities, are they intended to be serviced at a rural standard as well? I think you mentioned onsite servicing, but just to be clear, is that both for water and sewer?
So, Mr. Mayor, the actual applicant will likely be able to answer that better than I can. I don't know very much about the servicing. I know that the Hughes Lake ASP accommodates interim servicing and onsite servicing, and that the rural industrial district is to allow for those types of standards, but I don't know specifically what's proposed.
Okay. Thank you. Counselor Bressi?
Thank you. I was going to ask a question along the same line. So, rural industrial, is there a different, with a rural cross-section, is there a different type of road that gets installed there than would be required in other industrial districts?
Mr. Drosh?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, I am not certain of the very specific details, but it is a different road standard to something such as having drainage stitches and not necessarily requiring sidewalks on either side. So, it is a different standard.
So, how does that work, then, if this is owned rural industrial, and then the neighboring land and pieces touching it get zoned an industrial standard that has that different road cross-section? How does that get handled? Is the city on the hook for upgrading this road with the future developers? How's that work?
Mr. Drosh?
Thank you. So, through the mayor, the assumption would be that the remainder of this quarter would be to the same standard. Any future upgrades or levies for future upgrades would be handled by our engineering department.
Thank you. Okay. Okay. If there aren't any, Counselor Minhaas, we'll also do the public presentation portion. So, do you have a question for administration, Counselor Minhaas?
Yes, I do. What, how are we going to have the services, like it'll be city water, utility, all the service is going to be required, or it's going to be just everybody going to have their own wells and supply the water and sewer?
Mr. Drosh, I think you might have said that previously to my question. I think, and I think the answer was, the applicant might have more information, but the zoning does allow for onsite services using wells and onsite storage. But maybe we can ask that question of the applicant for more detail what the plans are specifically.
So, the other question is, because rural area lots have the gravel roads, it'll be a requirement for paving the road, or the gravel road be satisfied? Because even counties require the paved road in the development area now.
Mr. Drosh?
Thank you. I'm actually not certain if our engineering standards allow for gravel roads or if they will be required to be paved.
Okay. Okay. So, it sounds like we may have more questions for the applicant. I imagine that they've been listening in, and so we will open the presentation submission portion of the public hearing. I would invite the applicant or their representatives to come forward to speak in support of the application. And so, who do we have that was going to be speaking in support of this application? Mr. Glenn, welcome. We can see you, and if you start moving your lips, we'll tell you if we can hear you.
There. Can you hear me now?
We can hear you.
I feel like I'm on one of those commercials. Yeah, so I guess I'm here to answer any questions. I don't really have a presentation per se. I think Reed did a great job presenting the proposal. Just that, one thing I would add is that we have a shadow plan that shows currently three lots, one of them kind of being larger than what the minimum is, but the total area being, meeting the requirements. I think that, we haven't actually applied for a subdivision yet, so that could change a little bit. That could be four lots that are, that actually exactly meet the bylaw, but we wanted to put the idea forward that if we wanted a bigger piece of land, to kind of show it at this stage. But, to answer the questions about servicing, I think we absolutely would be looking at private onsite services, whether that's hauling water or wells or septic hauling septic. Yeah. And I'd be happy to answer any other questions.
Okay. Question for Mr. Glenn? Randy, I have one for you, and I don't know whether it's something you'll be able to answer or not. So, in terms of the future transition of this site, will there be, I think we're getting a little feedback from one of the screen. Randy, will there be any requirements for these sites to transition to urban and to become available? We have had experiences in the past with the Rocheu industrial area where the city and the business and landowners wanted to have city services, but we weren't able to find a way to compel them to take them. So, what will happen to the services over time?
I think, I think that my understanding, Mayor Given, and this is kind of our first foray into this particular zoning, but is that we would look after providing the private services for this first stage would be a maximum of twenty-five percent of the quarter section, and any subsequent development within the quarter section would contemplate full services. So, the road right of way and everything that we've been providing in this stage would allow to accommodate future servicing. And I would expect that in order to service future lots within the same quarter, we'll end up running services adjacent to or very close to the lots that are created under this particular zoning, and services would be readily available. It doesn't speak specifically to, you know, actually running services into all those lots that are already created, but I'm sure that there'll be lots of discussions with the engineering department at the city at that time.
So, just, and I appreciate that this is relatively new for all of us. So, is your understanding that any subsequent lots, other than the ones that are currently contemplated in the shadow plan there, that they would be required to develop to a service standard? Is that your understanding?
Yeah. My understanding, reading the area structure plan, and it's been a month or two since I've done that, but is that the first stage allows for some interim servicing, but that any development beyond this will require servicing reports and a plan to permanently service the quarter section.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Glenn? I don't see anybody. No. Then, Mr. Glenn, it looks like you're off the hook. Thanks very much for making yourself available. You didn't have to go far, so I guess there's always that.
Yeah. Thanks.
Much appreciated. We will continue on with our presentation submission portion of the public hearing. Was there anybody else? I'll, maybe I'll ask this to administration, because I'm not sort of calling out to the council chambers. Was there anybody else on the line that had intended to speak to this public hearing? Ms. Karbushewski?
Thank you, Mayor Given. There are no, there's no one in the queue to speak in opposition or any other manner to this public hearing.
Okay. Okay. And so, I'll just confirm then that we don't have anyone else on the line that had intended to speak to this public hearing. I see that we do have one screen marked lobby laptop. Mr. Bork, can you confirm that there was nobody that had attended the City Hall lobby intending to speak to this?
No, it was available, but no one has attended there.
Okay. Thank you very much. So, one last opportunity, counsel, for any questions for administration? Counselor Thieson?
Yeah, Mayor Given, I'd be prepared to make a motion if there are no other questions.
Well, we're just going to go, first, I'm going to go to close the presentation submission portion of the public hearing, and I did have Counselor Minhaas to make that, to make that motion.
Perfect.
Counselor Minhaas, I don't see any other questions for administration, and we've closed the public hearing, so we can move on to business arising if you'd like to go ahead.
Thank you, well, Mayor Given. I'll move the, counsel, give the first reading to bylaw C-1260 dash 120, beginning amendment to the land use bylaw.
Thank you very much, Counselor Minhaas. No discussion or debate on first reading. I'll call for the vote. All in favor? Thank you. That motion carries unanimously. Go ahead, Counselor Minhaas.
I ask counsel to give the second reading to bylaw C-1260 dash 120.
Okay. Thanks very much, Counselor Minhaas. Any discussion or debate on second reading? You know, I just, counsel, I'm fully in support. I just make the observation that I think this is, if not the first, it's one of the few times that we've used rural industrial. I'd encourage all of you to sort of watch how this goes, and it may be one of those things that seemed like a good idea at some point, and then down the road, we may have to just pay attention to how it turns out. My concern would be that we end up creating, over the long stretch, very rural-style developments that end up becoming a drag on city finances in the future as the landowners begin to demand more urban services. And, having said that, I think we should absolutely pass this at this time, because we want to ensure that we're competitive in the marketplace within our region, and, you know, our closest competitor is the county, and this matches a standard that would be possible in the county. But at the same time, we should be cautious and thoughtful about not creating our own future problems. So, that would be a reason to try this, see how it goes, but pay attention and remember that we did this, and that it wasn't always a set-it-and-forget-it kind of thing. If we start to see some outcomes that we don't necessarily like from approving these kind of things, we may want to change course at some point in the future, but I don't think that that's today. Certainly would encourage council members to support second reading. Anybody else have anything to say on it? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote on second reading. All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Counselor Minhaas?
I have third reading to bylaw C-1260 dash 120 at this meeting.
Okay. Thanks very much, Counselor Minhaas. This is a motion to have third and final reading. We all know the drill on that one, the motion to have. Any discussion or debate on that motion? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. All in favor? That motion does carry unanimously. Counselor Minhaas?
I ask counsel to give third reading to bylaw C-1260 dash 120, being amendment to the land use bylaw.
Thanks very much, Counselor Minhaas. Any discussion or debate on third and final reading? Counselor O'Toole?
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. It's been a long time with the annexation. We were looking for land like this so we could develop, and now we have that opportunity, and I'm just, I'm really excited about this, and I'm looking forward to what actually goes out there, and how well the access is, and how well, and what type of businesses are moving there. So, yes, I am very supportive of this. Thank you.
Thanks, Counselor O'Toole. Any other discussion or debate on third and final reading? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. All in favor? Thank you. That motion carries unanimously. Counselor Bressi, did you have something arising?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Given. I just moved the council direct administration to provide a verbal update to the appropriate committee on other uses of rural industrial in the city of Grand Prairie. And just for that, it's, we're not quite sure if it's elsewhere in the city, but I've got concerns about this development and what this might look like. I sure wasn't going to hold it against this landowner as they're trying to do it, if I've got concerns about our policies, so I felt very comfortable passing that. But as you said, I'm kind of nervous about what this looks like in the future, so I'd like to, A, trigger this conversation, come back to the committee for conversation, but also if there are examples of where this is happening in the city, I'd love to know so I could take a, so I could take a look at it. And again, just that motion was specific to say a verbal report, not expecting a whole bunch of work to happen with staff, but come back and answer that question that we asked today that I think is an important question.
Okay. Okay. Thanks very much, Counselor Bressi. Any discussion or debate on that motion? Just a request for information, really, from administration? Not seeing any discussion or debate? Then I'll call for the vote. All in favor? Okay. Thank you. And opposed? One opposed, Counselor Plot? Did I get you right there? Are you opposed?
Sir, I voted on, I was in favor. I was late.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. That motion is unanimous, then. Unanimous in favor? Okay. So, we can move on to our next public hearing. I would call to order the public hearing for bylaw C-1260 122. I would look to administration for an introduction. Mr. Welton?
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted, can I confirm that you guys can all hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you very much. This is an application to amend the land use bylaw, to change the zoning of a parcel of land. You share my screen. This is an application to amend the land use bylaw for the area that's identified in the black line. The area is currently designated manufactured home community, and the proposal is to change it to, or back to urban reserve. Urban reserve would have been the zoning that was in place prior to the outline plan and area structure plan being adopted, and so they're proposing to take that land back to urban reserve in order to be able to farm it. The area is located west of Hundred and Sixteenth Street and south of the CN tracks. The area directly to the west is developing as a manufactured home community, and then, as you can see in this map, to the south, there is some single-family residential subdivision that has been approved and development started in that area. The area to the east, directly adjacent to Hundred and Sixteenth, is future commercial. There's no development there, and railside business park located across the tracks is all industrial. When the area was being developed for the manufactured home community, the area, or at least some of the area, was stripped of topsoil, and as a result, basically, the owners couldn't continue on with the farming of the site, which then rendered it legal, or sort of rendered it nonconforming, and they couldn't continue it, and so basically, this rezoning is to take it back to urban reserve so that they can continue the farming. The applicant has indicated that due to sort of its, you know, economic activity in the area, the, it will be several years before this land is actually going to get developed for residential, and therefore, basically, they're proposing that it, that it continue or that farming resume on the land. The, the area is designated residential in the municipal development plan. It's designated as manufactured home community in the Kensington Area Structure Plan and also in the Kensington Outline Plan. This map shows the current zoning of the site and the surrounding area. As I mentioned, the area to the south is mostly single-family residential. To the east is commercial. To the west is the remainder of the manufactured home community that's under development, and to the north, it is industrial general. We did send this amendment out through our normal notification process. That included letters to the adjacent property owners. Due to the size of the site, two notice of change or notice of zoning sites were posted on the site. The proposed amendment was advertised twice in the newspaper, and it was also posted on the city website. With all of that, I didn't receive any comments or concerns from anybody regarding the proposal. The amendment would allow this parcel of land to resume farming. Our assessment department indicates that the impact on the city's property taxes would be approximately twenty thousand five hundred dollars a year. I believe it's in the best interest of both the landowner and the city that agriculture resume on this property. The, as the, as the landowner has indicated, it will be several years before the market is such that this land can be developed for, or will be developed for residential, and I think that the best, best thing to do for that land is to actually allow the landowner to resume farming. In the absence of that, it could be, it would be, could become a weed problem. It just becomes like a big field that is unmaintained. It creates costs for the developer to actually start to go in there and cut down weeds and that sort of thing, and it also has the potential to create, to be the home for nuisances in the neighborhood. You know, people might start abandoning, you know, couches and cars and that sort of thing on the property if they think that it's not being cared for, and therefore, I think it's in the best interest of both the landowner and the neighborhood that agriculture be allowed to resume in this property, and therefore, we're recommending that council give this first, second, and third readings. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks, Mr. Welton. Any questions for administration at this stage? Counselor Bressi?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I'm just curious about our process in general. This request we're getting a lot of and seems to be rubber stampings lately, although we'll see how tonight goes. I'm just curious, how, I'm trying to get a sense of the time and the expense that go into a process like this. So, on the developer's side, what do they have to pay to rezone land? So, on the developer's side, what do they have to pay to rezon land, and how long does it take them? And on the city's side, how much staff time do we put into something like this?
Sure, through the mayor, the, if it's just the land use bylaw amendment, like a standard rezoning, the application fee is $4,000, and then there's an extra $500 application fee, so that's $4,500 is the fee to the city. From our standpoint, I guess from our time, on a fairly simple amendment, a, it might take, you know, between 30 and 60 hours of work, doing all the different tasks that need to be done, kind of start to finish. For a fairly simple amendment like this, where there's a district already in place, where the number of adjacent landowners is fairly limited, and I guess sort of the known, the known outcomes are not too difficult to analyze, the, an amendment like this, you know, takes a minimum of two months, and I think this one here is pretty much right at the minimum. More complex, more complex land use bylaw amendments obviously take longer in time and longer in staff time to, you know, to basically, to review and analyze and consult with other departments, external agencies, and also external land or adjacent landowners. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions for administration at this stage? Councilor Friesen?
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. I know it doesn't, it's not really in relation to this, but just a curiosity, Mr. Welton, in this area, I believe there's a plot of land that's pre-designated for the Sunrise House? Is that in this area that's being planned to be rezoned?
Through the mayor, I'm not aware of the location of the Sunrise House. This area, the area that's being rezoned is entirely manufactured home community. I would kind of expect Sunrise, a Sunrise House would be in more of like a single-family neighborhood. That's my expectation, but having said that, I'm not aware of where it would be, so I can't confirm that it's not in this area.
Okay, thanks for that, Dan. Just a question then in regards to this rezoning. If we were to rezone it, that would obviously slow down the access to city services in there. I know we've had discussions about potentially running a transit line out in that area once it's developed, but this would significantly slow that down, am I correct?
Through the mayor, the, I mean, there's, there's, there's city, well, there's hard services, like water and sewer, running through 84th Avenue. With respect to transit, you know, if this area was rezoned back to agricultural and kind of continued to be farmed, which is sort of what the areas to the north and south are, you know, what it, what it does is obviously, it creates a low-density area that is, the existing low-density area is far from the remainder of the transit network, for example, and therefore, it is more costly and less efficient to actually serve that. But in the absence of rezoning this, it's our understanding that just based on, you know, sort of the growth in the community and market conditions right now, that even if this was not rezoned, it is, that would not spur more residential development in this area. So whether or not it's rezoned, the problems of like, you know, a very slow economy are, exist either way.
Thank you for that.
Thanks, Councilor Friesen. Any other questions for administration before we go to the presentation submission? Councilor Plot?
Thanks, Mayor Given. I'm just wondering, at the current present time, are there any occupancies or any people living in Kensington yet?
I believe there are, Mr. Mayor. The, I think there are, there are a number of manufactured homes in the area to the west, and there are houses in the single-family residential neighborhood further to the south. I think Mr. Rossler, the applicant, is available as part of this Zoom meeting, and he might be able to answer more questions related to sort of the pace of development that's occurring in that area. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, okay. Thanks, thanks, Mr. Welton.
And Shane, sorry, if Shane can turn off my presentation, that would be fine.
Okay, thanks, thanks, Mr. Welton. So I don't see anybody else from council with any further questions for administration, so we'll go on to business arising, sorry, we'll go on to the presentation submission portion of the public hearing. This would be an opportunity for anybody in support of the application to come forward, particularly the applicant or the applicant's representative. I think I heard that Mr. Rossler is going to be representing the applicant in this case. Mr. Rossler, if you'd like to come forward by turning on your video camera and your audio, we'd welcome you to the council meeting, the public hearing.
Hello, can you hear me?
I can hear you, absolutely.
I am not able to turn my video on. It says the host has stopped it. I don't know what that means.
Well, I, so, you go ahead, we can hear you by audio, and I think our IT team that's in charge of hosting the meeting can probably turn on your video, but go ahead and, if you want to make any presentation. Were you intending to do any, there you go, any screen sharing?
No, no, that's fine.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, thanks, council, Mayor Given. Just here on behalf of the applicant, Kensington Development, so if, this is, Mr. Welton did a pretty good job of explaining everything, hopefully I can answer a couple of the questions that, that came up during the presentation. You know, this is, I think this is my third or fourth time at council with this type of an application. They do seem to be, every time I come, I think it's the last one, but they do seem to come out of the woodwork, so, anyway, they, this is a typical, fairly typical, this one's a little bit simpler than some of the past ones that we've done. The application in this case doesn't, doesn't have a lot of budget implications. I know there is, Mr. Welton referred to the reduction in tax assessment, but that wouldn't take, hasn't actually taken place yet, so this would be basically a continuation, so it doesn't have any immediate budget impacts for the city as far as I'm aware. I could be corrected on that, but as far, as far as I know, last year it was assessed as far as mine, and it would be again this year, so. Not being said, the issues of weeds and cleanliness on the, on the property is definitely something that was thought about during the, during the application. It's a constant thing that we're dealing with, with vacant land, so. We did have, we're not sure on the timeline, but we did, basically, the reason this, this area was stripped is because Kensington's a very large development, and at the end of the day, this is a, this is an area that we needed for laydown, area for pipeline, pipes and whatnot, for pipe manhole things, I got to construct the mobile home park in the first phase of Kensington, so that was the reason that was done. They actually did seed the property last fall, so we're expecting some growth in spring, actually, with the winter weed that they put in there. So, so either way, I mean, that's the intention of the owner. They don't have any intention of developing in the next few years, and just to speak to Councilor Friesen's question there about access to services, whether this stays as MHC or it reverts to UR, not a lot of difference in what occurs with the services. The adjacent arterial roadways are constructed already. All the services to the site are as they are, their mobile home and services, full, full city services, and so is the adjacent property to the southwest. So until this is ready for development, there isn't a lot of, there isn't a lot of made or ramifications to servicing. Something that just is, is there. The intention of this is just so that they can get back to farming on it and farm it in conjunction with the land to the east of this, which is currently zone commercial arterial. If there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Hey, any questions for the delegation? Are there any questions for Mr. Rossler? Okay, I don't see anybody ringing in. Then, thanks very much, Mr. Rossler, for attending our council meeting tonight and being here to answer our questions. Really appreciate it. And we'll just ask you to, I guess, leave the presenter's table by turning off your video and your microphone, and we'll move on. Was there anybody else? Again, I'm just trying to create new practice here, and so I'll look to the city clerk. Was there anybody else that had let us know that they wish to attend to speak to this public hearing? Ms. Karbushewski?
Thank you, Mayor Given. We do not have any other delegates waiting to speak at this public hearing.
Okay, okay. Thanks very much. And Mr. Bork, with our lobby laptop at City Hall, was there anybody that had attended there to speak to this? No, okay, I see Mr. Bork indicating that there wasn't, and so we will close the presentation submission portion of the public hearing and move on to business arising. I'd look for a motion for first reading. Councilor Friesen?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I'd be happy to make that motion. So I move that council give first reading to bylaw C-1260-122, being an amendment to the land use bylaw. And just to speak to this, we have seen this come before council a few times now, and I've actually done a 180 on this. I understand that here we are enabling the landowner to better, more appropriately care for the property while awaiting the opportunity to truly proceed with the development that is eventually planned for here, and I don't think that there is a downside to that because in, in the end, we were counting on our developers to get this stuff done, and this is just one way that we can help them maintain the land that they have in their queue awaiting development. Thank you.
Thanks, Councilor Friesen. So motion for first reading. I'll call for the vote on first reading. All in favor? Thank you. That motion carries unanimously. Councilor Friesen?
Thank you, and I think I leapt forward and gave my second reading spiel, but here I will certainly move that council give second reading to bylaw C-1260-122.
Okay, thanks, Councilor Friesen.
For all the reasons I mentioned.
Sure, absolutely. Open for discussion or debate. Councilor Resi?
Thanks, Mayor Given. I, I really appreciate this time, unlike the previous couple requests, the developer and administration laying out some good reasons from a land use planning perspective to approve this, where there's been other ones where it's been pretty, it sounded like it's just about the tax play, and I've been unable to support that, but I definitely can't support land use decisions for land use reasons. That being said, I'm still really nervous about this, about this whole process of council politicians waiting into, I understand it doesn't have any financial implications now, but it probably does when it goes to get reassessed the next year or two, and I'm on, I can't fault that, about that process, but also it's a process where we've literally said yes to every single one of these similar requests, and we've said there's probably just a few of them, and yet they keep on popping out of the woodwork, and we've said, we're saying yes to these because it's business-friendly. Well, I'll point out that our current process right now, we're asking the developer to rezone the land to spend $4,500 with the city, and that's just the fees they're paying the city. They're paying their consultants additional fees on top of that, and we're waiting them to, we're asking them to wait a couple months and have this unpredictable process going before council, and then when they're ready to rezone the land to develop it, they have to go through that whole expensive, time-consuming process again. And to me, that really just shows that our current process, I think letting them get to this result is something that I've always been comfortable with, but this process I'm so uncomfortable with, and one of the reasons is because it really doesn't seem business-friendly to me. So, I think this time I'm going to be voting in favor of this, but I really hope that council have some serious conversation about how do we create a more business-friendly process that's also more equitable and fair to all taxpayers, and that keeps the politicians away from tip of the scales on individual properties. I hope we'll have that, that conversation seriously in the future.
Okay, thanks, thanks, Councilor Resi. You know, I'll just say to the, the point about the process, I'm curious if over time the development community might start to, start to use this more proactively by not rezoning as much of a property right up front. I think in times where the market is, is hot, it's in the developer's interest to get as much rezoning done all at once, and then, and then they're ready to meet market demand in a cooling market, and maybe that's what we're seeing here, you know, is, well, it's obviously that's what we're seeing here. I think businesses could help themselves by not having to come back to council if they hadn't rezoned the land in the first place. That's the challenge, I think, of being in business, trying to forecast where a market is going to be. Certainly, nobody could forecast exactly what's going on today with the pandemic, but that is one of the risks of business, and I think, at least in part, the developer is, well, developers take significant risks in a whole bunch of areas. I think this is one of the smaller ones that they take of rezoning a whole bunch of land, but they do have some ability to influence that. If they chose to, you know, move forward, getting, you know, the area structure plans in place, the outline plans in place, they don't necessarily have to rezone every parcel, every area upfront, and so they are also in control of that. I wouldn't say it's just our, our process that's challenging. Our process is challenging when we're not moving full breakneck speed forward. It is a little bit more complex when we have to pause, like we are right now, so. But I support second reading as well. Councilor Plot?
Thanks, Mayor Given. I just, I really appreciate your comments, sir, because I think in general, we'll probably see a shift with industry, I think you're right. Grand Prairie's went through significant growth, where 100 lot phases made sense and big tracts of land, like what, you know, we've seen on the, on the north in a town may have made sense at one point. Moving forward, I think developments are already going to react to this, so if Councilor Resi wants to see us have more conversations, I think conversations are great. My fear with that is we put in a bunch of policy and process that reacts to what happened to market, and that's one of the things market always kind of says, is market will react to market, and so if, if the market was hopping right now, we wouldn't be having these re-amendments, we wouldn't be having this land, get rezoned back. We've had four to five years now of very stagnant, of very low growth in our city, and that's what, honestly, to me, is what's causing this. I mean, I've had a lot of conversations with a lot of developers, and I do think Mayor Given's bang on in his analysis of, we're probably just going to see how the development community moves forward. It's going to be a little different, and it's going to be maybe hard on our city sometimes because we always want to have abundance of product and all this availability, and then when it gets to this point, we're like, oh, jeez, what, you know, why are they rezoning? And why are they remending it? You know, these are decisions that were made two years ago, three years ago, to start telling this piece of land developed, and just, it's too big of a timeframe, and it's too reactionary to just think we're going to blanket it through policies. So I think what we have works. I think administration works well with the community. I just think we're going to see the industry probably right-size what they do for a phase in moving forward and how they develop things.
Thanks, Councilor Plot. Any other discussion or debate on second reading? I see Council O'Toole, and then we'll come back to you, Councilor Resi. Councilor O'Toole?
Mayor Given, I think the people that have come here and asked for changes in their business, and I appreciate council being flexible enough to understand that business isn't the greatest in certain areas at this time, and I would, I honestly feel that making this change would be a positive change for both the developer and the community, so I'm totally in favor of this. And as we discuss items in the future, just remember each one of them were different. Every time they come to council, each one of those concerns were completely different, and allowing some flexibility is, is a pretty good thing, and this council should be proud of that. Thank you.
Thanks, Councilor O'Toole. Councilor Resi?
I just want to say that I 100% agree with everything that you said, Mayor Given, and Councilor Plot, and I'd suggest that that's a reason why we need to find ways to allow, allow developers to do this without going through the expensive, unpredictable process of rezoning, where I think that if the economy's hurting more than ever, we want to have land that's ready to go, that a developer doesn't have to go, oh, shoot, I need to wait two to three months to get through this process, and I have to hope council approves my rezoning on the other end of this, and who knows what the, yeah, and I think that more than ever, we need to have quick processes and predictable processes to respond to a hurting, hurting economy. So you're right, it's a natural reaction to our current policies is to zone less land for developers. I think that makes sense with a developer. I don't think that's what we want as a city personally.
Thanks, Councilor Resi. So I don't see anybody else in the queue. I believe we're on second reading, so we'll call for the vote on second reading. All in favor? Thank you. That looks unanimous. Councilor Friesen?
Thank you. So I will move that council have third reading for bylaw C-1260-122.
Thanks, Councilor Friesen. Does anybody need me to give the motion to have third reading spiel? No, okay. Then I will call for the vote. All in favor? Thank you. That motion passes unanimously. Councilor Friesen?
Thank you, and I will move that council give third reading to bylaw C-1260-122.
Okay, thanks, Councilor Friesen. Any discussion or debate on third and final reading? Again, seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. All in favor? Thank you. That motion carries. Okay, and so in terms of our agenda, I think that brings us back now to item 8.7, and so I'd look for a motion to adopt the council committee, the whole minutes from May 14th. Councilor Minhaas?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I move the council, adopt the minutes of council committee of the whole meeting held on Thursday, May 14, 2020, as presented.
Thanks, Councilor Minhaas. Any discussion or debate on that? Any discussion or debate on that for the minutes? Anything we need to change before we adopt them? Don't see anybody stirring, so I'll call for the vote. All in favor? Cue, that motion carries. And, uh, Councilor Minhaus, do you want to carry on?
Yes, sir. The tax penalty relief for twenty twenty by law C twenty, by law C fourteen twenty. I give first reading to by law C fourteen twenty, being tax penalty relief twenty twenty by law.
Okay, thanks very much, Councilor Minhaus. No discussion or debate on first reading, so I'll call for the vote. All in favor? Thank you. First reading passes. Councilor Minhaus?
Give the second reading to by law C fourteen twenty-three.
Thanks, Councilor Minhaus. Open for discussion or debate on second reading? Any discussion or debate on second reading of this by law? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. All in favor? Thank you. That motion carries unanimously. Go ahead, Councilor Minhaus.
Have a third reading to of the by law C fourteen twenty-three at this meeting.
Thanks, Councilor Minhaus. A motion to have third and final reading. Any discussion or debate on the merits? Seeing none, then I will call for the vote on the motion to have third and final reading this evening. All in favor? Thank you. That motion does pass unanimously. Uh, Councilor Minhaus?
Ask council to give the third reading to by law C fourteen twenty-three being the tax penalty relief by law twenty twenty.
Thanks, Councilor Minhaus, for that motion for third and final reading. Any discussion or debate on third and final reading? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. All in favor? Thank you. That motion carries unanimously. And then we have one other piece of business, the twenty twenty capital budget revisions. Councilor Minhaus, are you going to do that one as well?
Uh, I move the council approve the change to the twenty twenty capital budget as presented.
Thank you, Councilor Minhaus. Open for discussion or debate. Uh, Councilor Clayton?
Thanks, Mayor Given. I won't be supporting this motion as discussed at council committee as a whole. I think there's, there are some points in this capital revision that I will support. And so I guess rather than not supporting the whole bucket, I'll amend, I'd like to amend the motion to include support of the MSI identified initiatives as well as the gas tax identified initiatives or revisions, whatever you'd rather call them, of the additional items that were added under those two buckets only. And speaking to that, I don't support the capital tax additional items for various reasons. Right now, we've yet to see the aftermath of what COVID is going to look like. Today, there's an announcement of one retailer that had six hundred stores across Canada that declared bankruptcy. There's going to be numerous, numerous impacts to our communities, to our families, to, to businesses. And I think that right now is not the time for us to be adding projects because we have the money. I think that there are, you know, families have been obliterated by COVID and we've really not seen what this is going to look like. You know, in my opinion, government can, can support and can guide people and, but to, to buy economy isn't really what we want to do with our money. I'm all for stimulus and for sort of being revitalizing and restarting economy. But right now, some of the items that are in that capital tax plan are a little bit presumptuous. When you look at, for example, the Revolution Place items, right now, one of those items identified in there is a box office revitalization. At this point, do we even know what the future of box office and tickets look like? Do we even know what the future of entertainment and concerts, et cetera, look like? Possibly hockey games are going to go forward in the fall and, and we will need to sell tickets, but possibly not. And so, in my opinion, we need to sit back and, and, and sort of hold on to our money while we have it and wait to see what the best use for our money will be. There's projects that are identified in there, Revolution Place and in specific, one at the Ernie Radburn Pavilion, that there hasn't been a needs assessment to clearly identify the future of these buildings. And, and I'm not saying that without, down the road, that even six months from now, that we won't want to do these projects. I just think right now that there's money that's been identified that has clear impact on tax rates. And prior in this council meeting, we talked about next year's tax rates and, and the potential to have an increase. And, and so capital tax dollars are one of the, one of the ways that we truly can manage the rate of taxes that are charged to our ratepayers. You know, so I'm not saying don't do these projects. And although it may seem like a good time to do them because these facilities are currently not being used and it's nice to, to potentially tender out a, a nice little chunk of work for somebody, I just don't think it's a good use of our dollars when we don't know the future use of these facilities. Sure, in the concession, for example, in Revolution Place, there may be some building code issues in there. That is one area that I absolutely would support enhancement because the food and the alcohol sales are, are parts of that operational model that bring us dollars directly back. So, if we can make it more efficient by streamlining that part of the building, great. But at this point, I don't even know if that building is going to have people in there in the next six months, the next eight months. I don't know what entertainment looks like. None of us know what this looks like. But we already have a motion passed at committee level to look at the opportunities for that facility. So, why not wait till the outcome of the review of what that facility can be to figure out what to do with the money? So, I don't not, I don't necessarily want to, to kill the whole bucket of capital tax items, but I think that it just may be the easiest thing to do right now, to look at it as a sort of a whole bucket of things. Because, like I say, the aftermath of what COVID is going to be is only just start to begun. And there's going to be more and more impacts. And if tax increases are a reality next year, and if there are needs such as economic recovery funds, and if there are needs of revitalization and stimulus, we need to have the money from somewhere. And not necessarily does it always have to come from our reserves. This is a two million dollar bucket that we could spend, but maybe not right now. So, that's my amendment, and that, those are the reasons why. Thanks.
And so, yeah, Councilor Plot, I just want to make sure that, that we know what we're voting on. And so, in terms of the amendment, Ms. Kavaschewski, how did you capture that?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I've, I've captured it in this way, and if it's wrong, we'll fix it. But Counselor Clayton has moved that council amend the motion to strike as presented and insert to remove the capital tax identified initiative.
Counselor Clayton, so that's how administration's captured it. Do you want to clarify at all, or is that your intent?
No, I, I guess it's better to say the capital tax identified additions in the revision. So, I don't want all capital tax initiatives, just the new, the revisions that rattled.
The revisions?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, I think we need to clarify between revisions and additions. I think that there were some funding sources that were swapped, and those would count as revisions. And getting rid of the revisions might change and impact some of the MSI or gas tax funded projects. So, I think you just need to be really specific around what your intent is. I see Mr. Bork popped up on the screen. Do you have some advice around Counselor Clayton's intent? Or how to phrase that?
Um, yes. And I, what I think might be useful is if I just share the screen from the one, the one table that we used last time. Just one moment here. So, I would say as administration understands it, the MSI and gas tax on this revision slide would, would proceed. And the new additions in this capital tax, the third, the third column here would not proceed, is our understanding of this motion.
Yeah, and, and to be clear, if the appetite of council is to go through these independently, I could, I could name, to make it very specific, there is three, sorry, I'm just reading. Yeah, three specific lines in the twenty twenty capital tax revision that I'm specifically addressing. If that, if there's more comfort from council for me to clearly identify the three specific ones that I don't want to do right now, I'm open to that as well.
Okay, uh, so, um, well, so for right now, Counselor Clayton, your motion is, covers all of those additional items in the capital tax.
Yeah, you bet. It'd be the one point three seven one, you know, yeah, you bet.
Okay. Counselor Plot?
Uh, thanks, Mayor Given. I'm starting with the motion as it is right now because there's things on the capital that I'd want to approve. I do have a couple of questions for administration, though. I'm just wondering on the five hundred and forty-four thousand dollars it's allocated to Revolution Place Vision and, and twenty-five year anniversary enhancements. With what's happening, with it being repurposed potentially June first as a, as a shelter, am I, am I safe to assume that none of these enhancements would be happening for some while now? That we could have a conversation about that and those wouldn't be impacted? Like, would those still be able to happen later in twenty twenty? If this were to happen and we got back and this was approved within a month, there were six weeks when we had that report come back?
Sure. So, I see Director Miller?
Right. Thanks, Mayor Given. I did have a conversation with Catherine, the manager. And we're pretty confident with the renovations or the upgrades that we are proposing. We could still proceed if the Bose Center is used as a cost program shelter.
Okay, thank you. Thanks for that. And my, my second question is on the capital tax, the lower half of that. It doesn't show with the seven hundred and ninety-one thousand we alluded to earlier not being allocated. I'm just wondering what administration's intent with just, with, with having that kind of funds not allocated that are going to have an implication on our taxes?
Mr. Bork?
Our intent was, this was, this was one-time money because of some, some work that finance did to close off some capital projects and look at the grant. This was unexpected and we moved, it was planned to be done for June. We moved this up because of COVID and look at some, some possible stimulus packages in this construction season. The seven hundred and ninety-one thousand, we deemed a fairly actually small number considering the speed we were moving to, to identify projects for this year. We also wanted to leave some, some flexibility for council. There had been some discussions about different ways to support the community. And we wanted to ensure that there was some flexibility and administration hadn't identified all of the money upfront.
Okay. Uh, thanks for that. I had a couple other small questions, Mayor Given, but I can come back to the queue later if that works better.
Okay, sure. Thanks, Councilor Plot. Counselor Bressi?
Great, thanks, Mayor Given. I guess I'm looking for advice from the, from the chair or maybe Counselor Clayton in terms of, I can support most, I can't move, I can't, don't want to move an amendment to an amendment. But there's, my, my struggle with this is I support removing most of these out, but there's one project that I actually do feel very strongly should happen. So, I'm kind of wondering, should I support this motion? If it passes, try to get, make another motion to add something back in? Or how, how would you like to see them?
Yeah, so, I think, um, yeah, the motion is specific that it's all of the items. The only way to make it not specific to all of the items in that column would be to amend the amendment, which I would prefer not to do. So, you can either defeat the motion and do something different or, you know, if the motion does go through, to try to add something back in. Yeah, it's, it's a bit of a challenge when it is, you know, the motion's intent is the entire thing. Sorry, the amendment's intent is the entire thing. Counselor Clayton?
Sure. So, if council will allow me, I'll make a friendly amendment, friendly change to my amendment, rather, to specifically remove Revolution Place twenty-five year anniversary enhancement, Revolution Place Vision and Ernie Radburn Pavilion thirty-five year anniversary enhancement. So, that in turn would, would be a go-ahead with ELC enhancements, Hillside Railway fencing, and council's Economic Recovery Fund. That, speaking to that, that will put the remaining unallocated capital tax.
Just a second, Counselor. Just a second. Before you speak to it, I just want to make sure that administration gets that. So, you willingly, you know, changed your motion, your amendment to say, to move rather than as presented with the following changes, to delete the Revolution Place twenty-fifth, Revolution Place Vision, Ernie Radburn thirty-fifth. So, just to make sure, I'm just looking for affirmative from, from Arlene to make sure that she's got that. And yeah, okay. Okay, go ahead, Counselor Clayton, speak to it.
Thanks, Mayor Given. By simply removing the two Revolution line, Revolution Place line items and the Ernie Radburn Pavilion line item, it leaves just over a million dollars of remaining unallocated in, dollars in our capital tax. So, there are some, and, and it's not to say that these won't be done after further review and after further assessment of the facilities and needs and, and what the future of, you know, operational changes may happen after COVID. But at this point, those three specific items are what I'd like to amend in the, to the most, main motion today.
Okay, thanks. So, so Counselor Clayton, you know, with the willingness of council, I think, has clarified her motion to be specific to only removing those three items from administration's recommendation. Other than that, the, the, so her amendment would amend the motion to say, with the exclusion of these three things, these three line items. Any discussion or debate on Counselor Clayton's motion? I'll, I'll, I'll jump in to say, we did have similar discussion, I think, at committee of the whole. Fair enough to want to talk about it again. There was a motion passed at the council committee of the whole meeting to ask administration to come forward with opportunity to do a larger project at Revolution Place in twenty twenty. That passed. I was happy to see it passed because, and I don't think it's contrary, you know, if, if council chooses not to go ahead with a larger project at Revolution Place, which I would hope that council will, but we'll see what administration comes forward with, then I think these are needed projects. I would hate to see us do any throwaway costs. And my understanding from administration was that they wouldn't proceed with any of these projects, particularly at Revolution Place, in a, you know, in advance of council making a decision about a larger project. So, I would encourage council to not support Counselor Clayton's motion, to support the original motion and to have that discussion about Revolution Place. With respect to Ernie Radburn Pavilion, you know, that facility is probably one of the, in, in normal times, one of the best-used facilities in the city. I imagine that it will continue to be a very well-used facility, although there may be operational changes. And it certainly is showing its age. I think that it's one, a hundred thousand dollars will go very far there. And, you know, the bigger picture, an additional part of the picture, sorry, not the bigger picture, because that's also important. But another part of the picture for me is the ability to do small projects in a quick way that are not all paving projects, that don't all hire the same kind of contractors. And I think the kind of facility touch-ups and improvements that are proposed, you know, both at Revolution Place and the Radburn Pavilion are the types of projects where we can hire smaller contractors that do different things than a lot of our city forces and city projects usually touch. And it's a quick way to get money out into the community that has a good benefit to the community by enhancing those facilities. So, I would encourage council to not support the amendment for those reasons. Is there any other discussion or debate? And Counselor Clayton will make sure to come back to you to close. Any other discussion or debate on Counselor Clayton's amendment? Counselor O'Toole?
Thank you, Mayor Given. As you stated, we discussed this the other day. We went into great depths and had lots of good, honest discussion. And I will not be supporting this motion. I think the things, the items that you touched on in your little presentation there were exactly what we talked about, and I think it's going to be good. It's a very old building, Revolution Place, been ninety-five, and it needs to coat a paint and it needs to have a little bit of dress-up to make it more user-friendly to these times. In ninety-five, we didn't have tickets that you could put on your cell phone. And so, the box office needs to be changed that little bit. As quoted by Ms. Clayton, we don't know what the things are, but people use their cell. Clayton, uh we don't know what the things are, but uh people use their cellphones uh very much and store a lot of information in there, to go down and buy a a ticket and have it in your pocket is a thing of almost the past now, and uh we need to we need to make sure that uh our box office, the inside of the building is more user-friendly to what the needs are, and so I will not uh support this motion, this amendment, thank you.
Okay, thanks Councilor O'Toole, uh Councilor Plott?
Uh thanks Mayor Given, um I appreciate the amendment that was how it's been redone, I wouldn't have been able to support it before, I I actually will support this now, um I'm really concerned about the conversation we're going to have at Revolution Place in another month, whenever that is, and we're going to talk about changes, and those changes may impact some of this five hundred and forty-four thousand dollars we're spending, um they might not be as big a priority if those other ones were more important, and to me, those might be more important than me spending the five hundred and forty-four thousand dollars on some of these things, so I'm loving the idea of having a bigger conversation with Revolution Place, and I'm willing to look at the city board and money, or looking at reserves or other mechanisms to go higher than the five hundred and forty-four thousand dollars to get this building back to a not a twenty-five-year-old entertainment facility anymore, but I don't spend think spending the five hundred and forty-four thousand dollars now without a bigger plan makes a lot of sense, and I feel the same way about Ernie Radburn Pavilion, Mayor Given, it's a great facility, it this hundred thousand dollars would do a lot in it, I guess for me, I don't think that hundred thousand dollars is changing uh the community overnight, and I don't think that it's a big enough spend that it's going to help the economy turn around quick enough, that it's uh that it's warranted that we need to hurry up and do this one, so so I'll be supporting the motion, because I'd love to have a conversation with those two facilities, and I'm probably going to have the appetite to spend more than what's sitting on this capital budget now.
Okay, thanks Councilor Plott, I see Councilor Blackburn?
Thank you Mayor Given, I'll reiterate what I said at our committee of the whole meeting, we're talking here about changes to budget, we're not actually saying that any of this stuff has to actually happen, it does give the administration the ability to plan for it to happen, and if we find out uh in the the things that we learn in the future, in the near future, about uh what might be more appropriate for Revolution Place, then we can make a change, we don't necessarily need to spend this money, but uh but I think having the budget in place that would allow for it uh is appropriate, so I won't be supporting the amendment either.
Okay, thanks Councilor Blackburn, um is there anybody else that wishes to go in uh before I go to Councilor Clayton to close, uh Councilor Plott, did you, no, okay, is there anybody else?
Well, I'm just confused, I thought I thought when I asked that question, uh just to Council Blackburn's, I thought administration's basically saying they're going to go ahead with these projects, so that's approving these now and then going, oh crap, a month from now we have a conversation, I agree with Council Blackburn, I think it's it's great we've identified those, my fear is that once we've identified and we've approved this, we've given the administration authorization to go and start those projects, and so that doesn't mean that those projects would be stalled until we have that Revolution Place conversation, so that that is my fear of that.
So I see Director Miller's there, maybe uh Director Miller, you can give us administration's intent, understanding the motion, the other motion that was also passed at the council committee of the whole meeting, Director Miller?
Uh thanks Mayor Given, uh so my understanding is that uh in regards to Revolution Place, that everything is on hold until we bring back a more comprehensive vision with some options, so we were not going to initiate any work at all, so rest assured the money stays there, it's just in in reserve in my mind if it is approved for future projects, if it is ultimately approved by council, uh for Ernie Radburn Pavilion with that one, I thought uh if it is approved tonight, we it would be a proceeding with uh the painting and fixing some of the bricks and uh touch-ups inside and outside, it was only Revolution Place that I thought we had to bring back additional information before we proceed with any work.
So so Councilor Plott, I think, just and I'll I'll check Director Miller, just confirm if I heard you right, I don't want to be putting words in your mouth, so administration wouldn't be proceeding with even if these numbers for Revolution Place were budgeted, administration wouldn't proceed with spending that money prior to council making a decision about an an overall larger vision, is that correct?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, okay, um thanks for that, Director Miller, is there any other discussion or debate before I go to Councilor Clayton to close? Seeing none, and Councilor Clayton, yours to close.
Thanks Mayor Given, yeah, that was my question for administration, because I was uh council committee of the whole, we spoke about the fact that these this money was earmarked so it could happen during the downturn and the slow times of of this facility, so if this uh isn't happening now, um why earmark it, I mean, if we're going to look at a bigger picture, now we're putting half a million dollars sort of aside, penciling it in for what could be, it's kind of, I I think it's unnecessary to put it to that bucket when we're not even necessarily going to do that bucket, so regardless of that, I think that uh the bigger picture here for me is still the fact that there's no need, there's no point in waiting, there's no point in approving these earmarked items tonight, we've already agreed that they're not necessarily going to happen till a review, we passed a motion to pass the review, to have a uh discussion of what the options are and what the potentials are at the facility, in regards to uh you know, new ticketless economy, and 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 right now is the time to change businesses, we will start to see a cashless society, we will start to see the uh many, many changes, and so if we're not necessarily using this money for what's identified here, why even approve it to be for those items when we don't know what we're going to do with the facility? It seems odd to me to earmark items for a project that administration hasn't even said will happen till after we review the bigger picture, so uh regardless of that, I think that now is the time for us to look at our cap- capital tax dollars and identify items that don't need to happen right now, we need to look at what how society's going to change, how operationally some of our facilities are going to change, um to to go out and earmark money for things that may or may not happen until we've had the the full conversation on what the opportunities are at the facility, it seems unnecessary in my mind, so I encourage council to support the amendment.
Okay, thanks Councilor Clayton, thanks for that close, uh so we will call for the vote on Councilor Clayton's amendment, uh which again, uh just to clarify, uh Arlene, can you maybe just read it back uh for all of us, just so we know exactly what we're voting on?
Thank you Mayor Given, so um with Jackie's uh friendly amendment, this is what I have for the the current amending motion, uh council amend the motion to strike as presented and insert with the exclusion of the following initiatives funded by capital tax, number one, Revolution Place twenty-five year anniversary enhancement, number two, Revolution Place Vision, and number three, Ernie Radburn thirty-five year anniversary enhancement.
Okay, okay, good, so we're all clear on Councilor Clayton's amendment, uh I will now call for the vote, all those in favor of Councilor Clayton's amendment? Okay, uh three and opposed? Thank you, uh that's the balance there, six, so that motion does not carry, we're back onto the main motion, um Councilor Plott?
Uh thanks Mayor Given, um I'm just going to make an amendment to this motion now that the seven hundred and ninety-one thousand capital that's not allocated be allocated to the the economic recovery fund, so that would make that fund go from five hundred thousand dollars to one point two nine one, I guess, one point two nine one million dollars instead, and um yeah, I'm open for some conversation, I'll be happy to close on that.
Okay, so that motion's in order, um just taking the unallocated uh capital tax dollars and allocating that to the council's economic recovery fund, um so if we remember that table that was there before, that line was shown at five hundred thousand, Councilor Plott is taking the unallocated capital tax and adding it to that line in that motion. Okay, um any discussion or debate on that motion? Um seeing none, um Councilor Plott, do you want to close, uh there's no debate to close, I guess, but if?
I'll I'll maybe close because I'm nervous that I'm not sure how this is going now, but I guess we've all talked about we want to identify a recovery funding source, I think administration's found it for us, I just think we need to actually allocate it, and so I'm hoping that we support this motion and then we allocate the funds to this, and then we can put some further teeth around how that money is going to be actually deployed in the community.
Okay, thanks Councilor Plott, so we'll call for the vote on Councilor Plott's motion, uh his amendment, uh which would allocate that seven hundred thousand and change uh to the council economic recovery fund, um I will call for the vote, all those in favor? Thank you, and opposed? I see three opposed, and six in favor, so that motion does carry, okay, uh so that uh amendment did carry, so we're still back to the main motion now as amended, um if there's anything further, I don't see anything, uh then I will call for the vote on the main motion as amended, uh all those in favor? Thank you, and opposed? Okay, one opposed, thank you, um that handles all of our uh business with respect to item eight point seven point two, um and uh we've now I'm trying to make my way through our agenda here, because I know we're not on item number nine, I think I have to skip to item uh fifteen, we had no delegations on our second half, um and so we'll go to council member reports, council members, uh maybe I'll just go uh across the screen, starting from the bottom of my screen, and I'll ask if you have any reports from your external uh committees um or agencies, um I'll start with Councilor O'Toole, Councilor O'Toole, did you have any reports from your external organizations?
Um Mayor Given, I did have a meeting scheduled with the uh Grand Prairie Rec Board with the county, uh I zoomed in, except I was using uh actually I didn't zoom in, I used the Teams process, I got in and it kicked me out after, and I could not get in, so I did not attend that meeting, also, the community futures meeting had a a meeting planned, and uh we also had a council meeting of the whole at that particular time, so I was not able to attend that one, I felt that the council business was a little bit more of a priority than the community future, so uh no reports.
Councilor O'Toole, uh Councilor Thieson?
Um I uh I didn't have any committee meetings this past week, uh but uh while we took our break, uh I think it's appropriate uh uh that I just make mention that I received word from uh Whitney Wild uh from Nighthawk, uh that there's a there's a landslide that had occurred at the bottom of the chairlift uh last night, um there's, I I only make mention of it now because uh there's lots of riverboarders that are taking pictures of it, uh obviously, they're getting to the bottom of it, we did know that there was some geotechnical uh potentialities in there, but uh according to what's here in this email, one of the towers slid downhill approximately fifty to sixty feet, and there was significant dirt movement, uh now, at the last council meeting, I did mention we had taken some preventative uh measures uh to take down the chairlifts and to ensure that uh all that stuff was down, because we had noticed the slope, and we're still waiting on our geotechnical people to be able to get in and give us an assessment, um because of that, damage to our assets was minimized, but just keeping council in the loop, that uh that did happen, and Nighthawk is preparing an official statement for the public.
Thanks Councilor Thieson, uh Councilor Clayton?
Thanks Mayor Given, uh nothing to report right now, thank you.
Councilor Plott?
Uh thanks Mayor Given, we did have an economic development committee meeting, uh where we had Chris and Colin from Conway uh come in and talk to us about our investment attraction strategy, I think we're all aware of, um there was some great discussion with them within our group, and we had several members from the city administration on the call as well, with some uh some local represent representatives, um so there's going to be more dialogue coming back and more of an official report at some point, but it was good, good conversation, um we also discussed the chamber's recommendations uh that were presented to us earlier, and we discussed as a group that it might be a good idea to have Tanya from the CEO from the chamber be participating, I did reach out to Tanya, and she has agreed to willingly participate as an observer, so she wouldn't have a voting right or anything added, and so I did talk to Rebecca Lee about reaching out to her to see if we can start having her on our Uta Falls meeting, just so we have her there, especially during this this COVID time, and now that we're talking about an economic recovery strategy, potentially that I'm hoping our committee has some some say in, um and also Rebecca did a great job of just giving us the ongoing updates of what's happening with all the different things that they're involved with through economic development, with the business resiliency, G-Preb and the different forums, as well as the regional economic um development strategy that we're also looking at uh coming up soon as well, and I think some of you might have had an invite uh in your calendar, so that's all from me, Mayor Given.
Thanks Councilor Plott, Councilor Freezen?
Um thanks Mayor Given, I do have, um uh it the library board meeting was this week, I wasn't able to attend uh because that was the day of our marathon committee of the whole, uh but I would like to give a couple of little updates that uh came as part of our agenda, the ED's report, um the library has continued some of their programs that had formerly been in-house, of course, they've been able to use them online, things like the book club, the motion and mobility program, and resume rescue, they've also started a couple of new programs, like a digital escape room, and an animal propping hangout night they had um uh on the eighth of May, so really meeting the uh the COVID crisis with some new and innovative ideas, which I think is really important, and the other thing I wanted to mention was that um our Minister of Municipal Affairs has approved an advance of fifty percent of the operating grants for libraries, so rather than requiring the quarterly application that typically is needed to get the operating grants, um just in light of how things are right now, um the minister has has just approved an advance of fifty percent, so that does make things work a little easier for the board and and the library, that's it, thank you.
Great, thanks Councilor Freezen, uh Councilor Bresson? Nothing to report, Councilor Minhaus?
Nothing to report.
Okay, uh Councilor Blackburn?
Nothing to report, thank you.
Okay, thanks, uh I'll I'll just really briefly say that I have continued with AUMA meetings, uh we have had an A um Alberta Municipal Services Corporation, which the city buys its insurance and employee benefits through, um uh board meeting for that business entity was last week, um of of note, AUMA was able to pass on uh insurance savings to member municipalities that use their insurance services, uh they negotiated to recognize that um municipalities uh in often cases have less rolling equipment right now, um and uh some limited uh some uh liability reductions, I guess, as a result of facility closures, uh so they're able to pass on savings to insurance customers, um and AUMA uh also um has a benefits provider, is a benefits provider for the city of Grand Prairie, uh so council members, if you're taking advantage of uh the city's benefits, uh those are actually provided through Sun Life through AUMA, um and there is also a reduction in those benefit costs, recognizing that over the last while, while many of the paramedical services have been closed, like physiotherapists and massage therapists, um and dentists, that the utilization of the programs uh has gone down, and so there was, I believe, a twenty percent savings in those areas, and that was passed back to the uh to the plan holders, so um they're going to do that on a they're going to assess on an ongoing basis, um but just um thought council might be interested on how um you know, what this company that we subscribe to services through, that we are sort of a owner in, uh how it's treating us uh during this time, and it's good to see that the administration there is being pretty proactive, um and you know, didn't take any direction from the board to do those things, uh that was AUMA uh business administration looking at it and saying that uh those were things that they could pass on to their members, and I think it is demonstrates the benefits of having these services through an organization that is really member-driven, um because they appreciate the the challenges that municipalities are having at this time, um I also participated in one uh AUMA municipal governance committee meeting, and uh later this week, we have an AUMA board meeting, um also, uh just wanted to update council at our last council meeting, there was a motion as a result of correspondence directing me to get in touch with the Reeve and the uh the two Reeves of the MD the Reeve the MD Greenview and the County of Grand Prairie to discuss the Tri-Municipal Industrial uh Program, and uh we are going to be talking later on this week, it was a bit challenging to coordinate times, um but we do have a conference call scheduled for later this week, and my intent there will be uh to ask for a uh meeting of the uh committee, so that our uh committee members can get together with theirs and discuss the future of that uh partnership, but I just wanted to provide that uh circle back and provide that update to council, since there was specific council motion on that last time, uh and that's all I have in terms of updates, um so that was our updates from the uh agencies, boards, and commissions, uh was there anything additional that council members wanted to include in terms of uh council member updates, I mean, we're not attending events in quite the same way, but there are some di- many digital events still, Councilor Bresson?
Thank you, I think um something worth highlighting was I had a interesting call with the Sport Connectors hosting a weekly call of sports organizations, they call and it's a roundtable, share your thoughts, share your challenges, but so an interesting challenge that was brought up to me was by a number of groups that use our our rec facilities and pay us money to use the rec facilities, they're very nervous about facility fees, A, there's the financial pressures that every other nonprofit business is facing right now. now, but the other thing they're worried about is if provincial restrictions lead to them, uh, them being able to put less people on a sheet of ice or on a sports field, all of a sudden, not only do they have the financial pressure of they lost months of revenue, not only do their fa, families and users have the financial pressure of, they just don't have the same money spent on registration fees, but also now they need to recoup their fees for using our facilities with half as many people at any given time. And there's a lot of worry there about what that's going to do to them. So I think that's something that I'll be, some questions I'm going to be asking our administration is if we've had any conversations about that, and I think that might be a conversation that council needs to have, is what do we expect for these facility fees as they open back up again?
Good. Thanks, Counselor Bressi. Um, Counselor Freezen?
Thanks, Mayor Given. So I, um, was able to attend actually live, um, uh, flag raising for International Day Against Homophobia, Transphobia, and Biophobia. And, um, it's always a delight for me to be able to do that. Uh, in particular, this year, the, the theme was, um, breaking the silence and the importance of hearing stories and understanding the experience of individuals is precisely what breaks down that fear that contributes to homophobia, biophobia, and transphobia. And I was dismayed, um, um, to see some of the comments on the news stories that were done about it, uh, being very negative and derogatory. And, um, and that is the answer to people who say, why are you still doing this? Thanks.
Thanks, Counselor Freezen, and thanks for taking that on as Deputy Mayor. Uh, Counselor Theeson, I think I saw you? Yep?
Uh, thank you, Mayor Given. Uh, thank you also. I just want to throw my two cents, uh, to Eunice. Uh, thank you for being the council representative of that. I know we're, a lot of us wanted to be there and, and support, uh, but we sort of minimized that because of our social distancing requirements. But, uh, I think even before council, you were a huge advocate for it, and we had spoken at several events together. Um, so thank you for continuing to fight the good fight to ensure that everybody, um, is treated equally in our community and abroad in the country. Uh, the only thing I wanted to touch base on was on, uh, May thirteenth and May fourteenth, uh, the second phase of GP grows. I participated in, it actually happened on the twelfth as well, so Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, where we had the delivery drop-off. It was a seamless, seamless production. Um, people were really happy. Again, uh, uh, I think I saw well over a thousand, uh, vehicles come through on the two days that I was active there. I really want to tip my hat to our administration from all eleven different departments, like, everybody chipped in and everybody was really appreciative of the program to be the provider of it and to help, uh, help there as well. I did hear from some people who have been homebound and stuck, uh, in our city administration that it was nice to be able to get out and enjoy some, a bit of the sunshine and to do something that was so positive for our community. Um, I'm, I'm not sure of the official, official numbers. I'm sure we'll get that at our, at our, uh, next committee meeting, but, uh, I believe the numbers that I heard was, uh, out of the three thousand, we had nineteen-hundred total registrants for picking up potatoes and zucchini seeds in the soil and the soil baskets. Um, Renee Charbonneau, uh, who was in as a delegation, talking about her community gardens, was able to pick up, uh, fifty pounds of potatoes to start that off for the, for the hillside neighborhood. So that was really great. She was near tears when I called her and said, hey, you want to come pick up some potatoes? Uh, so that was really awesome. Um, also, we had a huge uptake from teachers as well, asking, uh, if there was any, yeah, I see you, Kevin, uh, to see if there is, uh, any potential that they could get their hands on it and distribute to parents. And, uh, at least from what I saw, uh, several teachers from Alexander Forbes School came with a couple different trucks with it and picked up a whole bunch of kits, whatever was left over, they picked up and are distributing to the parents. So enhancing the curriculum. Thank you, teachers, and thank you to everybody who chipped in for this. Uh, just a special, uh, note, uh, I did, uh, pick up Counselors Minhas, O'Toole's, and Bressi's, uh, potato sacks as well. Counselor Minhas has got his. Counselor O'Toole just asked for his. That means Counselor Bressi, uh, I'm sorry, but, uh, my mother-in-law had asked for a potato basket and never got one either, and so I got stuck giving someone's away. I figured you're the young guy on council, so there you are. Counselor O'Toole asked for it. Counselor, yeah, Minhas called me too, and so that's that. Uh, I can bring you some of my potatoes, though, if that, that'll help. Anyways, that's all I got.